For the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands in its own right, individual liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Here.
Councilor Angeloni?
Here.
Councilor Caprio?
Here.
Councilor Dooty?
Here.
Councilor Esposito?
Here.
Councilor Fawnin?
Here.
Councilor Fuji?
Here.
Councilor Wentworth?
Here.
Okay. Before we get started, I would like to thank everyone. I know everyone has put in a lot of hours. I know everyone on the council has spent a lot of hours, both on the phone Saturdays, working on the budget, many hours. And I know our cellphone bills are quite high. And I know personally, I've received many phone calls from businesses, residents, struggling with taxes, struggling keeping their businesses running in our town. And, you know, we're all keeping that in mind. And tonight, we had our public hearing last night, so there will be no comment this evening. We'll start with item two, fiscal year 2012, 2013 budget workshop. Item A, revenue.
Mr. Mayor, before you begin, there are two motions at your desk, two changes that have happened since the... That's the corrections, Anthony?
Correct.
I'll move the following corrections. Increased communications, 101, 43, 10, 301, by $6,000, reflecting new rates for AT for emergency circuits. And decreased health insurance, 101, 47, 34, 7.11, 0820, by $10,856, reflect latest anthem renewal projection of 17 percent, point seven, point one seven percent. By resolve, the town council, based on the recommendations, the town manager and treasurer finance rec makes the aforementioned changes to the 2012, 2013 town manager's budget. The net effect of these adjustments is a decrease of $4,856.
Moved by councillor Dooty, seconded by councillor Esposito. Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Dooty?
Yes.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fuji?
Yes.
Councilor Wentworth?
Yes.
Correct. Okay, I got a question on the revenue. On the revenue side, Anthony. On the, if you go to, in the salmon colored book here, page 17 on it, we have the special education excess with zero showing. And I wonder if, Anthony, if you could explain how that works? And when we get the money back, where it goes? And if, on the town side, we have budgeted any of the anticipated money this year already for this budget that we're working on? And if the Board of Ed actually budget is, budgets the 100 percent of their, of that need?
Well, as you can see on page 17, we do not budget. Towards the right-hand side of the page for both the 12 and 13, and if you look to the left to the 11, 12 column, there's no money budgeted. Typically, the special ed excess, there's no way to budget it, I don't believe. It's a year by year varies based on individual students that are in the special ed program at the school. And when the funds come in, as you see back in 2009, 10, $109,000, and 2010, 11, $168,000, it goes to the general fund, the general fund revenue.
Okay. And then what do we do with it then? Do we?
Just like any other revenue, it flows to the fund balance at the end and closes out to create a positive or negative year because that's typically...
So, as of right now, if there was any money to come back in the budget we're talking about, we haven't spent it yet on the town side. We haven't counted it. It's showing zero, and it actually is zero.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we have no way of knowing. Again, it varies every year and the timing. Typically, I think it comes in towards the latter part of the fiscal year, if I recall. I don't know exactly. I can check the records from the last couple of years when they've come in.
Okay. Thank you.
Have any other questions? Ben, do you have any other questions on the revenue?
Nope.
No.
Don, you're good.
I was wondering, the federal grants that we're getting zero this year, you don't have anything at all? Page three, there are no federal grants coming in?
The... Why is that, sir? Casey, no. We, again, federal grants typically are reimbursement process if you have catastrophic storms. So we have no way predicting what's going to happen. We may have no activity in 12, 13 that would get us grant dollars back from the federal government. So we don't budget that. Only, it's reimbursement process. And in this current year, we had the two events, the Alfred and Irene situation. Those, we chose to run through a special revenue fund, not through the general fund. So we can see the exact shortfall. It'd be about $50,000 at this point, it looks like, that'll have to come out of the general fund to meet that shortfall in that fund for those two storms. But we can't budget those without knowing, if you have a crystal ball, know you're going to have a storm next year, so we don't budget that.
Moving on to item B, Board of Education.
I have a few questions based on last night's public hearing and also in going through their budgets and doing some research. My first one is for the Board of Education. In the presentation that was given to the town council on March 20th, the budget that was presented at that time to the town council showed all-day kindergarten and a reduction of a first grade and a second grade teacher in order to accommodate that. But yet, at all of your budget workshops and your budget meetings, and when you passed your budget, there was no motions made to make that change. The budget that was presented by the superintendent to you showed a first grade teacher and a second grade teacher and not all-day kindergarten. So my question is, when did that change from your February meeting, when you adopted your budget, to the March meeting, when you presented to the Board of, to the town council? Anyone from the board can answer, unless Marcy wants to, as board chair, wants to address it. Well, there was no, there was no motion. I have all your minutes from your meetings, and I was at all of your workshops and at all your budget, at your meetings. And no one from the board made a motion to cut a first grade teacher, to cut a second grade teacher, and to add all-day kindergarten to your budget. Because when the budget was presented to you, it was not in there. It was one of the things on the page, not included in this budget. So my question is, when did the board take action to put all-day kindergarten in the budget? Because that's what was presented to the town council on March 20th.
We were looking to transfer those two positions, or we decide cut those positions. That came in during the process. So we were looking to do the enrollment to increase sizes in those two classes. And looking at projected K enrollment, which we thought would be at 120, it's at 99, with 10 on hold, we'd be able to transfer two staff members to increase from 46 sections.
Right, but the board never took the action to add all-day kindergarten?
Excuse me, please, Mr. Mayor. Superintendent said, I may respond to you. I do not believe they need to take action on it because they are not adding any money for it. They're simply re- deciding their staff, just like when they go into teacher year, in the school year, they don't need to get together and vote on it. So I think that's where the confusion came in. Had they had to add money to all-day kindergarten, they certainly wouldn't need to make a motion. But they, and actually the superintendent, they moved people around and had philosophical discussions to add workshops.
Right.
Superintendent, they need all-day kindergarten.
So I would like to add, then, it just seemed like the opinion in the room last night was that the council, for some reason or the other, was trying to eliminate all-day kindergarten. And it sounds like to me, from what I'm hearing, is that it wasn't a cost, or it wasn't an issue in the budget, to add all-day kindergarten or all media. It was more or less a judgment call.
At the get-go, based on declining enrollment and the ability with space at your own and declining enrollment, to do without a cost. And we had conversations about paraprofessionals and that we were going to absorb those people from within the current paraprofessional pool, that we would be able to do and accommodate the paraprofessionals.
It would just seem, it would just seem to me that if philosophically, you really believed in this, and this, and I'm not saying it's good or bad or anything like that. And I listened to all of your discussions at your workshops and at, when you did your budgets. And yes, there was extensive discussion about how you could fund it. But no one came out, and the board took no action to endorse the idea from the administration.
I think it's safe to say, and I'll speak for the board members, that they are...
Scott, excuse, would you come up and address the council? Thank you.
Scott Schoolmaker, Superintendent of Schools, North Branford. I think it's safe to say, and I don't want to speak for the entire board, but that they are 100 percent behind the idea and waiting to see in the process where the budget ended up. If we were able to support and do that without taking on more costs, that was something that they were certainly in favor of. And we did have conversations over the last several months, and especially the last two months, about this proposal, how it would work. We had three different scenarios, looking at staffing and class sizes. So it wasn't something new to them, and I invite the board to come up and speak on behalf of that.
Yeah, that, I'll just go on to my next question. That answers my question in regards to that. Also, at the presentation on March 20th, under your capital budget, it did not show the cameras for the auditorium in the capital budget. But a motion was made at your February 16th meeting, that that was supposed to be part of your capital request to us. And I saw that it was not in your request at all.
There was a memo that was sent from Richard Brandigan, and there were a number of items left on there on the capital account, when we were looking at paving or attempting to fix the cracks on the tennis courts. And in the memo, I think, Richard, correct me if I'm wrong, there was approximately $10,000 in unspent capital monies for surveillance cameras. And, you know, I shared that with the board. And there seemed to be potential monies there to do that for security at the auditorium.
But the board never rescinded their motion, or amended their motion, from their February 16th meeting that I have here, where they made the motion for what they were going to put into their capital budget, and it was mentioned in there, the security cameras. And that was at the February 16th meeting. So nothing in March happened. You already submitted your capital budget. So there was no motion made by the board to take the cameras out at any point in time.
We did, we did talk at our meeting to take the cameras out because we sent a letter to Richard Brandigan, which I have a copy of at home.
I know, but you didn't make a motion. You didn't take it out. You sent the letter, but that doesn't rescind your motion.
We were asking to pay out of rentals from the auditorium as a whole capital. Out of the rentals that are made off of the auditorium, and the response was that we would have to wait and see because April, May is the busy season for the rentals and see where we came out. In the process, we wait to talk there or not on that.
Mr. Mayor, if I can just comment, the item, both items are capital improvement, equipment purchases, whether it's the cameras or improvements to the sound system, or whatever's been requested, which would require at some point approval of the town council, because that's what you've expressed as your, as the process. And that's been town policy for some time now. The availability of funds that Superintendent Schoolmaker was referring to is in a former capital project, as we discovered with closing out, as we've been advised by our auditor, close out capital funds. There are several older capital projects, including about $10,000, Scott?
Correct.
Is what we saw for, but it still would require at some point approval of the town council for both issues.
There was, it started over the cracks in the tennis court. And I think it took approximately $25,000 in for court repairs. There was $10,000 in for the auditorium system. And there's one other item, Don Winnicky, I don't know if you recall the third item in that capital one. There was, I think, some HVAC units at the high school. And that was approximately 30, or 30-something thousand dollars.
And what the finance director has presented to you tonight is an updated capital projects plan that includes some of the issues that were not included due to a typing error in the original presentation that we talked about at the March 20th meeting. So there's an up-to-date list that's been provided at your desk this evening.
But I don't think it can be taken out of capital without them doing another motion, because it was in a motion, and it was presented to the council. That's what they presented to the council. And there was no other motion made to amend their capital budget that was submitted to you. So that's, that's my point to that one. Also, I have been going through the budget, and we also received, the council received several weeks ago, a listing of all the employees on the Board of Ed side. And as I was going through that list, I know the board has said that they have a zero-growth budget, and nothing has been added to their budget. And that's what they have said, and that is the case that they have presented for a couple of years. They may have added a position here and there, a certified position in their budget, which they accounted for. But in going back through their budget notes and the minutes of their meetings for the last couple of years, there have been a number of physicians that I've noticed that are now currently in their budget. They're, I believe they're non-certified, because I didn't see any motions that they were certified physicians. And some of these physicians, and I'll just mention them, and not by name, but there was a tech physician that was added after their budget was presented to the council and after it was passed. There was a greenhouse para that was added. There was something that they call a teacher's teacher that was added. There is a hall monitor at the high school. There is, I believe it's a counselor at the high school, and also a greenhouse manager. I'm not exactly sure what the person's title is. But in looking at the records that we were given, when I add up all of these positions, I was just wondering how these positions are funded in your budget? If they're not in this, if they weren't part of your original budget that was submitted to us and then added through the school year, how are they funded? Because they now become part of your bottom line the following year. So when you ask for a zero, that you're not adding any new programs, there may have been programs that were added during the school year that weren't in the original budget presented to us, and now they become part of the bottom line. So my question is, how did you originally, how are these positions funded?
I know, table two, for one physician's question, our school choice revenue for the 24 choice students who were given speaks to another. I don't have to listen to twenty of them.
Well, the counselor is included in the budget request and was here last year as well.
Correct, but, so that counselor was added the previous year, was not part of an added position in your budget. But I'm going over the course of the three, this is my third budget on the council. So I went back during my term on the council to look at it, to see once about these positions. Because when I go through and add up the cost of these positions, and I don't know who's receiving benefits and who is not, but salary-wise, you're talking at least $225,000 that has been added to the budget, and then whatever benefits are on top of that. And if some of them are funded through grants, could those grants, instead of paying for these positions, pay for a teacher? Because I know the buzz out there is that, depending on the cut in the budget, we're going to have to eliminate all of these teachers, a number of teachers. So can any teacher salaries be paid out of staff funding?
We're in charge of the Board of Ed when we have a number. We're aware of where the title fee monies are going, of the school choice money that comes in, and we're going to have to make those decisions.
Title fee money can be used to pay for a teacher.
Okay.
And can accrue and carry over.
Okay. I mean, do you have an, I get, some of the physicians, I didn't know what the cost is, but do you have an idea that we can give to the public?
I mean, 225 frankly sounds high, but...
Well, I can read off the salary positions, the dollars that were provided to us, and I don't know which ones have benefits.
Most of them do not have benefits.
So, I'm at 225, and that's without knowing who the hall monitor is at the high school and what...
It's an hourly rate without benefits, 35.
So...
No benefits.
So that, I mean, so I didn't include him, so it might even, or that person, I don't know if it, it could be a little bit higher than 225. So with benefits, even if two of the people get benefits on there, you're looking probably at least at $250,000 on here. So that is just part of my, with all of these monies, it gets put into the budget after the budget is passed, and funded one year, and then it automatically just becomes part of the budget the following year on there. And so when your increase comes through, it's funding that physician again. But it actually was added after we were, you know, your budget was presented to us without that physician in it.
Well, the board had detailed information for all those positions, and certainly is aware of that.
I'm not saying they weren't aware of them. It's, it's just the funding of them and the way the budget is presented to us. Last night, a parent had asked, or had mentioned that the flat-screen TVs at the high school were a business donation, and I wasn't aware of that. Is that, I'm just asking, is that fact, or is it paid through?
The high school principal's here, it probably was out of one of his accounts. I'm not aware of a business donation for TV shows.
So it's budget money? I mean, that, it comes down to either budget money or a donation. They had said donation, so I just wanted to clear that up to the public.
That TV was not a business or donation, it was out of the high school budget.
Okay.
Approved monies.
Right, no, it's fine. Um, okay. At your budget discussions, you also talked about the bus contract. Can you tell me if you're putting it out to vid, or if you're just renegotiating with the current company?
Our attorney has built specs with the business manager. We are waiting to get those specs back, and we are planning on going out to bid with them.
Okay. So, do you know how much the extra kindergarten run currently costs you in the bus contract?
Well, that's the problem, kindergarten run, as it stands now, doesn't cost any.
It's a freebie that Daco throws in?
No, it's, because it's a midday run, we, you know, basically, we have the buses for that time of the day. One would presume that if we did have all-day kindergarten and eliminated those runs, we would negotiate a credit. And frankly, that is one of the things that's in the bid to, as an add alternate, a credit for the elimination of the midday run.
And I know we've kept the same number of buses, the last couple, the large-size buses for transporting students, but with the decrease in enrollment over the last few years, is there any possibility that a bus could be, I mean, how much does a bus cost?
Where's the state current at 22 with our fleet? We're obviously looking at enrollment numbers in the bid spec, and obviously, you're aware, having been a board member, of the state requirements of what we are required to do. So appearing to those requirements, you know, we'll have to look at if we can go to a smaller size bus versus a full-size bus, and that'll be all part of this.
Roughly, how much does one full, how much does a full?
$30,000 for a full-size bus for a year. We did, we pay about a million dollars in fuel, or 200,000, excuse me, for diesel, a million for the contract. So you can estimate about $30,000 per bus.
Okay. All right. Also, last night, a parent had talked about AP classes at the high school, which I think are absolutely fabulous. And she talked about the cost of taking the AP exam, which is $87. And the district pays for, if you take more than one AP class a year, you pay, the district pays for the other AP test exams. Do you know about how much that cost us?
The total cost, the comment was about the AP book. It's not a requirement to purchase the book, it's an option of the student or AP bio account. You only have 12 classes, 11 or 12 that are offered. I'm very familiar, having been a high school principal, we did not pay for AP testing in the high school that I came from. And it's dependent upon the enrollment that year and how many kids take the exam. So offhand, I don't have a number.
But is, is that the policy at the high school, that you pay for AP exams for anything if they take more than one AP course?
Or a big, a random amount of classes.
Yes, a random amount of classes to do with class.
Okay. And I guess I have a little bit of a problem with that, in that if the student takes the test and passes it, they have now earned college credit for that class.
It's only in a college that accepts the AP to score.
Well, for 80...
So it's not, it's not all colleges that...
Right, but $87 to receive potential credit for a college class is a huge investment and a huge return on your $87. And because it is an elective, and it's not required of all students to do this, I guess I would seriously look at that policy. Because it doesn't pertain to all students, it only pertains to those students who elect to take the AP classes. And it's just use of the funds in the school. Because a lot of what we heard last night from the comments was directed at, you know, don't cut the budget, we need all this money, but I guess it's an allocation. And a lot of my questions have to do with the allocations of the monies that do go to the Board of Education on there, and things that we can do to alternatives. They may not all work, but they're suggestions, I think, in this economy, that we need to think outside the box and look at things and maybe... that we need to think outside the box and look at things, and maybe we can't do some of those things. I don't, that's why I asked the cost as how much it cost, how much we've spent on doing that. Okay. Some of the other areas in looking at your budget and going through and looking at the retirements that you already have noted. And that these are, these become large ticket items when they're in your budget, and it wouldn't be a reduction in staff because the person has already retired, but filling a position through attrition. And there are several retirements that are, have already been announced that I think could be done through attrition and reassigning of teachers that would save some money. And one of them is the guidance counselor at the middle school. You have, currently you have four guidance counselors at the high school with a decrease in enrollment from when you, when we added the fourth guidance counselor there. And I think one of those guidance counselors can be moved from the high school to the middle school where the guidance counselor has announced their retirement.
Well, I just want to comment that the Board of Education will have those conversations about personnel reassignment based upon the amount that they're giving from the Board. That's the charge of the Board of Education.
And I understand that, and I am not, I am just, I am just making suggestions to the Board of Education and to the audience, to the public, because it has been my experience in going to the Board of Education meetings, when you have these discussions, there's not a lot of discussion in public, that they're done elsewhere, and there's not a lot of discussion made as to where this stuff can happen. So I am making suggestions. I know the town council cannot tell you where to cut your budget or how you spend the money. So these are observations that I have made in going through the budget, and it's food for thought for everyone.
I appreciate and value your input as a former Board of Ed member, and you know the charge of the Board of Education, making those decisions after they're not an element.
Right, right. So since, since there's not much opportunity for people to get this information out, I am using this venue at this time to talk about some of these things so that the information is out there and that they can come to future board meetings and ask the same types of questions based on your discussions. So there's the guidance counselor at the middle school, and then there's also the reading consultant at Jerome Harrison School that is in the budget for a replacement at $100,000. And there can be a transfer from another school to fill that position. And students would still have reading consultants at both schools available to them. So it's not cutting a position, they would still have opportunity, and you're not neglecting them with anything. And my last comment is in regards to, I know generally that the talk becomes that if the budget is cut, and depending on how large the cut is, you know, the cuts are going to be made at the elementary level. And I don't think that you can look at just the elementary level, that you need to look at your high school and at your middle school. There was a report given at the March Board of Education meeting in regards to the class sizes at the high school and how North Branford class sizes are lower than other towns in our Derg and also in the state. So I am sure that there is a way, when you do your scheduling at the high school, that you can tell how many students are signed up for a class, and you don't necessarily need to have 15, if there's 75 kids taking a consumer F-class and you have five sections, that's 15 kids in a class. Can you have three sections and have 25 kids in a class? And maybe that teacher could teach something else. So I think you need to look at the whole district and not just target the elementary schools in regards to this. And the same thing would go for NBIS, the middle school. Last night, teachers were talking about the team effect at the, at the middle school and how important it is to them. Well, you have decreasing enrollment also coming up. Whatever in the elementary school is coming up to the middle school. And as those kids move up and you have less students there, you need to be more innovative and, and think they can teach, I don't underst, you know, why they can't teach English. So you're sixth grade, you teach language arts, maybe you don't have enough students to teach all that. You can teach some seventh grade, so you don't have the team effect anymore. I think these are areas that need to be looked at. Just because you had the same number of teachers there now, and as your enrollment goes down, doesn't mean you have to keep the same number of teachers. These are areas that are cost-saving, and this is what the Board will look at once the referendum goes through and they have their final budget numbers. So that is really, whatever happens here, it's going to be the Board of Education's decision as to where they spend that money. And that is where the public needs to go, to the Board of Education meetings. It was very sad to see the number of residents that did not come out when the Board had all of their discussions about their budgets. If there was one resident, it was, it was a lot that was at their meetings. And after last night's showing all the people that came out for the public hearing, I think those people also needed to be present at Board of Education meetings so that they can voice their concerns in regards to it. And those same people and more should go out when the Board is doing the difficult task of whatever their cut may be. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify something that Counselor Angeloni had mentioned in the beginning about the motion made to the council for our operating budget. It did include all-day kindergarten, it did not say it in the minutes. I was not, I was late to the last Board of Ed meeting when they passed those minutes. I personally made the motion, and at this upcoming meeting, I was going to be making a mention after reviewing it on tape for everybody. So I did make the motion to approve the operating budget. I don't know the dollar amount off the top of my head, to approve all-day kindergarten. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. One question on all-day kindergarten. Would you intend to replace, I mean, I didn't see where they budgeted for an additional paraprofessional for all-day K? And claiming that you want to move like one first-grade teacher and one second all-day K? Thereby creating the six all-day Ks with no additional teachers? But there are only sufficient paraprofessionals for the current K teachers, meaning you would need probably two additional teachers? But there are only sufficient paraprofessionals for the current K teachers? Meaning you would hire, have to hire two paras? What would that cost be and where would that come from?
They were approximately, the intention was actually to move paras from other assignments into those positions. Because, I mean, there are, there are a number of different kinds of paras throughout the district. And so that was what the, we had had some discussions with the role of principal about that.
From the existing Board, your question about the cost of a paraprofessional, I think they're 11 and change per hour?
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're in the $12 an hour range.
Is that the same for every para or are there's different rates for different?
There was special education, para, whatever.
There's, there's a scale depending on length of service. There's a step table, so it varies.
What's it go up to?
Well, there's a specialist rate which is different. That's...
Well, just give me the range, the low to the high.
11 to 20.
Thank you.
There was one other segment that I wanted to talk about in regards to capital projects. At the February 16th meeting of the Board of Education, when you were discussing your capital budget and you were deciding what you wanted to put into your capital budget off of the list that was proposed, there was, there was mention made that you're coming into the, the end basically of the fiscal year and that maybe some of the projects could be done based on savings that you have in other accounts. And for the benefit of the new Board of Education members that weren't here last year when we had the discussion about using current operating funds to pay for capital projects, which is not allowed. So if there are things on that list, and there was lengthy discussion in regards to the bathrooms at the high school and renovating the bathrooms at the high school, and they were not put on the list, and there was discussion about maybe we can do some of the items on the list. And the answer to that is no, you cannot, because those are capital projects, and that has to come before the town council. Now, there is a provision in the, in state statutes that says that a Board of Education can give up to 1% of their budget back to the town, and the town can, in effect, escrow that money for expenditures for the following year to be used for the Board of Education. And I would like to make a motion at this time that any money that is given back from the Board of Education to the town be used for capital expenditures from the Board of Education as approved by the town council and any extraordinary expenses that may happen on the Board of Education, be it snow removal from the, or whatever the case may be, with having approval, having to come before the town council to get approval before they expend the money. So currently that would amount to, they could give back to the town approximately $290,000 based on their current budget for this fiscal year.
I'll second it. Is there any discussion, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Could you explain what your rationale is as opposed to putting it into the general fund where Anthony has applied it to the fund balance?
The rationale is, the rationale is to use that money to pay, it would probably be used first to pay for capital expenditures that they have submitted to the council, that were in the budget that, and I don't know if it was incorrect, where the town manager had, it showed zero what the Board requested, and then it was a zero balance after that in our, in these, in this book here?
This is the amended, as I said on March 20th, this has been corrected, and this is now the amended listing from the Board of Ed which has...
So my proposal, I mean, things that I think makes sense to do are the boiler at the high school.
Oh, absolutely, you'll save a fortune going to natural gas.
Right. And so instead of taking new funds...
And thermostats too.
New funds and budgeting funds from, out of next year's budget and paying a tax increase is any money that they give back to us to use that money for...
A gas boiler would probably cut their fuel bill in half.
To use for capital expenditures.
I suspect they've got more than enough capital expenditures that would make sense that approving your motion isn't particularly troubling to me, except it seems to restrict any discretion we have as to whether or not we want to fund a particular capital improvement that's requested next year. And have that money earmarked just for capital expenditures as opposed to putting it back in the general fund where we've got the ability to apply it to anything town-wide? Even just enhancing the fund balance?
Well, it would, it would be a way to not have to have a tax increase on capital expenditures or any other requests that, depending on what their cut ends up to be, if there's some extraordinary expense that they, you know, we have another bad winter and they don't have roof shoveling in their budget anymore and they need money to do it, there's, there's money there to do that.
So it's not just earmarked for capital expenditures?
Right, or any extraordinary expense that they would have to come to us before, before they spend it, they have to come to us and plead their case as to what it is.
The general fund that would go to them is what you're saying.
Right. And whatever, I mean, I have no idea how much money that may be, but it could be up to 1%, well, 1% of their budget.
Any of that would flow to fund balance?
Right.
Okay, I got it.
Scott.
I just want to comment when I first started with the memo for the tennis crack repairs, the amount of monies that were in the capital. I guess the question, Richard, is the HVAC, the 30-plus thousand, and the $10,000, are those monies still sitting? Are those outstanding capital projects that were not completed? And could we take that money and do the boiler system? I think that was about $25,000 to $30,000. And then those pneumatic classroom controls were also a piece of that.
Those two total are $80,000. 34 for the boiler and 46 for the valves. So those two equal $80,000 in total, just so you know.
Okay. So the capital money's there, could that be earmarked?
Well, that, that capital money is up at the discretion of the town council as to how...
Well, I'm asking, Richard, if the money is there, I mean, if that's something the council wanted to pay also?
The answer is the money is there. The second part of the answer is, as Counselor Angeloni said, and I said previously, it's subject to the approval of the capital budget or the amended capital budget by the town council.
There, there are a lot of requests in our capital budget this year, and some of them, you know, it's requiring additional tax dollars, budget funds. And we are looking at various ways as to how we can fund some of these projects without having to increase the taxes. So that cap, those capital dollars that are sitting there, we have had discussions on as to how we will be using that, and that will be covered under our capital budget section when we get to it.
Anthony's got the number for us on that account too?
Yeah, I have it right here.
Okay. What's the number?
Well, it was potentially at the last council meeting, 269, 141, and we expended $10,000.
So we got 259, 141 is what you're saying.
So we have approximately $260,000. And this is capital projects from '03, '04 through '09, '10.
Now, that's not the money that we're doing the school with, right?
No, this is, this is different.
Yep, correct. Mr. Mayor, for the record, that's Counselor Angeloni's motion, that number is a maximum of $293,864, which is 1% of the adopted budget for the Board of Education in the current fiscal year.
So I believe we still have a motion on the floor.
Yeah.
So to your question, we still have a motion on the floor?
Yeah.
Roll call?
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Nina Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Paprio?
Yes.
Counselor Dooley?
Yes.
Counselor Spazito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnick?
Yes.
Counselor Fuji?
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth?
Yes.
You guys have computers in all the schools?
Serious?
Yes. Okay, and who takes care of your computers?
The, who takes care of the tech, the tech team, Tim Martin is the supervisor of the technology.
The company you bought the computers from doesn't do servicing on them or anything like that? You know what I'm saying? Like, is it cheaper for us?
We have warranties that, you know, we...
But is it cheaper for us to call somebody out when we have a problem? Or have a whole squad of people that we're paying?
No, I, I think the way we're doing it is efficient. I know here at town hall, three years ago, we purchased computers here for the entire town hall, and we were servicing them because it was far more economical than having... town hall, and we were servicing them because it was far more economical than having Anthony run around and have to bring in an empty. You can speak to the hourly rates when you were having people come in, and it was far more effective and efficient to have our in-house. When you look at the number of computers that we have in the district now and with the changes in technology, the smart boards and the expenditures, and they have a four-person team, you know, working throughout five buildings, to be honest with you, they're nonstop what they're charged with. And the hourly rate to bring someone in, bar seats.
What's our, do you have an idea what the total IT budget is?
The IT budget, service fee?
Both.
We do have a lease option, we have on the computers, we operate and purchase through a lease option.
So you return them or you own them after? And you get new ones?
We outsource after excellent years. We don't throw anything away until it's not, we're able to rebuild.
I'm sure you're doing the best you can, Scott, just, we're having a rough year. We got businesses in town that are leaving. There's one trucking company that's leaving, 12 trucks, selling his building. Central Plaza's a ghost town, Giano Plaza's a ghost town. Since '08 till-
243 foreclosures.
243 active foreclosures. I mean, gas went up, heating oil went up, cost me $1,200 to fill my oil tank two weeks ago.
Now, well, you know, when we did the last budget meeting, at the board, we knocked the price of fuel down.
Right, I know, but what I'm trying to explain to you is, you know, I fought for your budget, for your two programs last year, but it has come to a point where people can't do it anymore. That man who spoke last night, he made a lot of sense to me. He's an engineer and he's struggling. It's going to be a tough year, and I even told you this last year.
I understand.
So, you know, my heart's in for the kids. I got two grandchildren that are going to be going into this system in a year and a half. So I want the best for everybody, but bad year.
No, I understand what you're saying. I listen to the same man and he values education.
Absolutely.
We need special education money.
He's a very high level of education background.
Absolutely. We just need to think out of the box this year, that's all.
$303,000 of which, most of that is actually for the running leases that we have. We have a series of four, four-year leases.
Right. And that's not including salaries of the four people, right?
Uh, no, that's not.
Okay.
That's discretionary.
Right. Well, I'm sure it's a decent number. Okay, thank you.
I got a que, I got a question or a comment on, before I start with my other ideas. There's, there's money that was brought to our attention up at the state waiting for, and the only reason I'm doing this now is because all the players are in the room. So the Board of Ed can't say they're waiting for the town, and the town can't say they're waiting for the Board of Ed. So all the players are in the room, you know, and I don't know what the number is, but from past construction projects, there's supposedly, I've heard numbers all the way up to $7 million waiting for us to do the paperwork. So-
Not true.
Okay, so it's not true. Is there any money up there?
There is, there's three or four separate and distinct issues. There is, around 2000, 2001, there was code compliance projects at, I believe it was the high school, TVES, and TLTWIMs. We received all the, all state funding for that. What's left is to do the paperwork to close that out. There's no dollars, those, not that they owe us, $2 more, quite honestly, but like less than $10,000. You want to be specific.
Could I just add something on that? There is, there was additional phases to that project that were never done, and that's why I believe the state had money. This goes back to before the town had to certify that they had local funding set aside in order to get the project on the books. You could just put the project on the books. And what ultimately happened, there were things that were not done as part of that project, and so because it was a reimbursement project, we weren't entitled to the funding. They, I guess, didn't know we weren't going to ask for it, and so it was still open up there at either the February or the March board meeting. The board actually accepted those projects and closed out the projects, the work that hadn't been done. And that was at the direction of the State Department of Ed.
Okay, so there's, there is no, I just want to make sure that there's no, there's no paperwork we're waiting for and there's no money?
There's, there's a paperwork issue and it stems from the fact that the invoices from 2000 were shredded according to state statute, the timeframes we have before they were submitted to the state. We're trying to recreate them with other means of doing that, and that's where that project sits.
Make them up.
Good.
All right, so my point is, whatever we have to do to get that done, we're working on it.
The larger ticket item that there are millions of dollars out there relates to the NVIS project. And it stems from the fact that when the project was costed out to the state initially, it was done as if, right, right now, it went through as a renovate as a new project. Basically, soup to nuts, everything is new. Initially, when it was priced out, it was priced out as like just doing general work at the school. So a lot of things were deemed ineligible, things like replacing the carpet in the entire school, replacing the windows in the entire school, to the tune of like $7.7 million of ineligible costs, because at that time it was not a renovate as a new project. Once it was deemed a renovate as a new project, that number came down from $7.7 million down to $400,000 of ineligible costs. There's a process we have to follow to go back to the state to get our records changed. We're at the point now where we can't go back to the state until the project is deemed complete. Now, we all know there's issues there that it may not be complete for some time still. That's where that project sits. Once it's deemed complete, a few of us with the architect and engineers go back to Hartford, plead our case, get that number reduced down, then we can get more money coming in that way.
And there's not a time limit on that? I mean, they're not going to miss it?
They're, they're well aware of the situation and they're working on it.
And we did actually also contact the State Department about that to find out if there was any way to move that process forward without these final approvals. And I guess their experience is, they don't want to do the work and then have things change because, you know, more work got done and have to do it again. So they take the position that until it's accepted, they will not do the review.
Okay. All right, thank you. So having said that, the first thing that I want to do is, is take the, since, since it's not budgeted anywhere, I want to, I want to make a motion to, to give the Board of Ed the, let me get the right name here for it, the special education excess funding, all and any, if any, that might come back to them this year. I was given a, a number of $336,199.92 of expected. So this is, at this point, I guess, you know, hypothetical, but I want to make that motion that if that money does come back, that it goes to the Board of Ed.
So instead of crediting a revenue, you want to credit your spending accounts?
Is this for the next budget year?
For next budget year.
11-12, we said this year?
The one we're talking about?
12-13.
Yeah, 12-13.
I'll second it.
So basically, what I just did was if this, if it's 300 and some thousand, I took it out of coming back to the general fund, but I was assured that we haven't spent it already.
Right, it's not budgeted.
Okay.
What's the history of that money coming back as far as numbers?
We turned page 17 to see if they're in the last few years.
It's a little over $100,000 in the last two years.
Okay, so-
$100, $100,000 each year.
Each year.
There's two different special ed lines. I think when you combine the two lines, it's greater than 200,000?
It's greater than 300,000.
Well, in our budget, in our budget book.
Well, the special ed excess, new special ed, so.
So it's 336, 199 is basically the right number. Okay.
Because there's two different kinds of grants. There's a specific grant that's tied to individual students, and there's also a general grant that's tied to the total special ed population.
We're speaking about both grants?
Well, do I, do I have the right number of what might be projected for this budget year? Okay. So I'm, my motion stands.
I think the question is the last couple of years, if you're using the number 100 and 150. Is it greater than that the last two weeks?
There's, there's-
106 and 158 or something.
Well, there's special education 492 account here, and in 2010, 11, that account was 164, 126. And then there's special education excess, the 496 account at 168,000. So that's approximately $342,000 right there. That was in 1011.
Does the money have to be used for special ed? Or you can use it as a discount?
Just give it.
Okay.
So we are talking about both accounts?
Right.
And that's only an approximation, there's no limitation on that?
It's hypothetical. If the state's bankrupt, they get nothing.
But if it turns out to be 350,000, you're not restricted to 336.
Well, I looked at it this way, and you'll see with my next motion, I looked at it this way, that it's money that's coming back from the state and we haven't budgeted it yet.
Doesn't cost the taxpayers anything.
Doesn't cost the taxpayers anything in this year, other than what we sent to the state. So that's, that's my rationale, that it's money coming back, and, and you know what? I mean, it'd be a great shot in the arm in the general fund, but it's not encumbered yet.
Sound line.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question, probably for the Treasury Finance Director more so than anyone else in the room, and that is, how do we get the money that we receive in the general fund this year as revenue into next year's budget unless it's specifically earmarked in another fund that's set up?
Well, I'm thinking, 12-13, when the check comes in from the state, instead of putting it into our account as a revenue, we're going to discredit the Board of Ed expenditure account. So give them basically the 336,000 more to spend.
For 12-13. I just want to make sure everyone-
Yes.
12-13 only.
12-13 only is what we're talking about.
And it's not earmarked for special edu, education or?
It just goes back to the Board of Education.
I, I believe it's special education money coming back to this. Right.
Yeah, it goes into their operating.
And in all honesty, I mean, if we, if, if those didn't, if the placements didn't occur-
You'll get less money.
Or only occurred for half a year, we'll get less money, but we'll also pay less money.
Right.
Okay. Sarah, Joanna?
I was just going to explain that in my former job across the border, they're more famous, the excess cost and special ed funding came into the town, the purchasers were written off that grant account. So the town may, holds the money, but in a separate account, and maybe what he's talking about, the, the void, it has to be spent on the special ed needs and it's dependent upon the outplacement, and as you see, as the number goes up, it's because our outplacement has gone up, so it's costing us more. But they have been budgeting 100% of it.
So basically, this is reimbursing the taxpayers. Because we're, it's budgeted now on the Board of Ed budget at 100%.
Right.
And this is a percentage that comes back from the state for special ed.
For amounts over four and a half times to people's expenditure.
Which equates to the 330.
Right.
Hypothetically for this upcoming year.
So if it has to be used for special ed, all it does is this money reduces their special ed, which they budgeted 100%, so now they'll have an excess in special ed that they can spend in their general budget and do line item transfers into other areas. So it, it still is being spent on special ed, they're just reallocating their existing budget, their line items.
Right.
Correct?
The motion is clear. Okay, roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Paprio?
Yes.
Councilor Doody?
Yes.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Bucci?
Yes.
Councilor Wentworth?
Yes.
Before I do my next motion, I have a question for any and all parties in the room that want to answer. On our, on the insurance and the insurance offered through the state now, we did have a document that showed that there's a potential for quite a large savings.
We have a meeting technically set up for April 24th with folks from the state, our insurance representative, myself, Don, Richard, and Ashley Scott, so we'll know better.
So we don't know on that yet?
We have some rough numbers, but we're not sure, we're looking at Apple's staff as comparisons. So we're going to meet with the folks who've made the numbers up and see.
But that meeting will happen after we have to set the budget, correct?
Uh, yes.
Okay. So we won't have an answer before.
All right. All right, so I'm going to make a motion to reduce the Board of Ed's, I'm going to just take their net requested increase of $1,251,862.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to address that motion. The, the motion is to totally eliminate the entire budget increase request from the Board of Education, if I understand it correctly.
That's correct.
All right, and?
Anthony, what's the net difference from my, the last motion that we did?
The 836, well, 836 is hypothetical, you've got to realize, too.
That's true.
So-
About 915,000.
Right.
I think it's a hypothetical.
So we're dealing with a hypothetical in terms of what we get by way of a reimbursement from the state of Connecticut for special ed needs. We've identified questionable salary allocations or increases of $225,000 and that potential reimbursement of $330,000 for aggregate savings of about $550,000. I'm doing that math in my head, so I'm coming up with rough numbers, but that's still $700,000 less than the requested increase from the Board of Education.
And there's still a potential for insurance savings.
Possibility of savings in insurance and a definite contractual obligation to pay increased salaries, which I believe totaled about $700,000.
Well, the increase in contractual, according to their book, was probably, I think, just under 300.
There's, there's two combined from that.
Combined, I thought it was around five.
Seven hundred million.
Not, not out of the intrigue, it's not-
It's 300 for the teacher's contract, but then you've got to fill the hole from the job scale, that's 137.
Right.
And there was 136 for non-certified.
Right.
So what does that total, Don?
The job scale will be moved forward next year.
Don, what does that total, just about seven?
It's around 700,000.
I personally have misgivings. I have more than misgivings. I have a real problem. If we can identify clear cost savings of a half million dollars, it makes perfect sense to me that that is a tax saving that should be passed on to the town and to taxpayers in town. If we've identified a clear cost increase of $700,000 and we don't have savings to offset that, that we've identified, and there's been no communication of any such savings from the Board of Ed, and nobody on this council has found anything that they can point to and say, here it is, here's the $700,000. I don't understand how in good conscience we can make a motion to reduce that budget by $1,250,000.
You didn't change my mind, Joe.
Well, I'm asking you for an explanation. If you can, if you can give a rational explanation as to where that money's going to come from.
How about asking the 240 houses in town that are in foreclosure?
I mean, at some point, we have to have fiscal responsibility. We have to work with the money that we have.
Kids, they've got insurance money. They've got a lot of stuff where they could cut. We're not allowed to cut. Maybe I'll run for the Board of Ed and we can straighten it out, but we're not allowed to do that now. So we can't do it.
If you can identify the areas where that money is available, I'm wholly heartedly on board with that motion.
We're not allowed to look at their individual line items.
I'll concede that the communication.
You do know that by their own account, for at least a year, we have stuck our nose where they think this doesn't belong. And we have seen, you know, the things that go on over there. We've seen their W2s. We've seen W2s that don't match what their contracts are. There's some of them that are up as much as $17,000. I mean, you know, I, I feel that this was an irresponsible budget by the Board of Ed. And you know what? I have no idea of knowing what the right number is. But if they're going to hand in an irresponsible budget to us, I, I, I'm, you know, I've been here when the budget was much smaller than this. And, you know, we had to give them an $800,000 cut. So in mental math, this turns out to about 855. But you know what? That's a $30 million budget. There's a lot of places to find money. And, but you know, I mean, Joe, I, I respect you. I respect your no vote.
It's, it's not a function of me seeking your respect. I want a rational basis for making a drastic cut in a budget that.
Well, it's a drastic increase too.
That's, that's not a rationalization, Don. You're telling me it's a lot more money, but we know contractually they're obligated to pay $700,000 more.
Know what is in every, you know, if we can't go line item by line item, Joe, we have to try to make it an educated decision based on the information we've given. And there's no proof to me that there's a 1.2 million dollar increase. I mean, I'm a taxpayer in this town too. And somebody has to represent the taxpayers too. I mean, I understand that, you know, people have to represent the school board and try to do the best for the kids, but somebody also has to represent the people that, you know, every single year get a $600 increase in their taxes. You know?
Over four years, that's 2,400 on your house.
At some point, it's got to stop. I mean, or else, or else the property values are not going to be worth anything because nobody's going to want to buy a house in town because the taxes are going to be too high on them.
Property values are not worth anything now.
This is what I'm saying.
My brother's been trying to sell a nice house for about a year and a half. Probably three years ago, it was a half million dollar home. He's asking 340 and he can't even get an offer on, so.
This is what's happening across the board in town. You have businesses leaving. We're pricing people out of the town. We don't have the infrastructure to support 4% increases on school budgets every year. We, we have to start trying to work within what we have to work with and do the best we can with it. And that, that's my opinion, one to nine anyway. I mean, I, I know everybody's doing a good job. And every department could make an excellent case for why they should have more money. And I wish we had the money to give to them, but we just don't. And, and that, you know, one to nine, that's where I stand.
I, I just want to, while I'm here, I just want to, and I know because there's two businesses in our family that got slammed this year with, with an increase in taxes. But here's our Board of Education history. 2004, 2005, 3%. 2005, 2006, 6.78%. 2006, 2007, 5.1%. 2007, 2008, 4.03%. 2008, 2009, 4.27%. 2010, 2011, 2.41%. 2011, 2012, 3.99%. And then, in the tough economic times, we come back 12-13 for 4.26%. The, the money's there. We've given the money in the past. We don't have the money to give anymore.
And we close.
Gentlemen, I respect your analysis. But respectfully, what I would submit to you is you found legitimate offsets for $225,000 and approximately 300 and some odd thousand dollars. That's $550,000. And if you sat here and you told me you wanted to cut the budget $550,000, I wouldn't say a word. I'd be voting with you. If you told me $650,000, I would say it's a legitimate reach into what you consider maybe some budgetary shenanigans that deserve to be addressed. If you raise that to $700,000, well, what you're creating is more than a half million dollar hole that will result in personnel losses. And those personnel losses are going to have a direct impact on the quality of education of the kids in this town. And while I understand there's financial considerations, and while I'm extremely sympathetic to everything that everybody's experiencing in their business. I have a business myself. I don't want to cry about spilt milk. I've recognized extreme setbacks in gross revenues over the past couple of years. We've all, most of us here are in self-employed businesses. And we know what the economy is doing. And we've all had to make the tough decisions to cut back on personnel or do other things that make our businesses continue to operate. What I am telling you is that in good conscience, I cannot, without justification for it, totally eliminate every dollar that was requested. And I haven't heard that justification. I'm prepared to concede that the lines of communication with the Board of Education have been less than ideal. And that is not just a one-way street. I am not laying blame at our feet or at theirs. There should have been a better effort to communicate consistently with the Board of Education. But don't make your decision based on a perceived personal slight or a personality difference with somebody that you may have. That's not what should be driving your decision.
Dollars and cents, Joe.
Dollars and cents.
Absolutely not.
And student enrollment, Joe. I mean, the surrounding towns are losing teachers. I mean, I feel bad for them. My recommendation to a young teacher is leave the state. Because all young families with kids are leaving the state. Some of us are stuck here.
I got a phone call this morning.
You know what? We're going to have to lose teachers.
I know since I was four years old.
The guy that spoke last, last night is absolutely right. If we don't take this small step now, it's going to be catastrophic in two or three years. It's unsustainable when you have less kids in the schools. When, when Mike and myself and Vinnie were in the school system, we had almost 4,000 kids. We have 2,100 kids now. And, and, you know, we can't have, and maybe we didn't have much guidance, but we only had three guidance counselors in the high school. You know, with over 1,000 kids in the high school.
Gentlemen, we're talking.
When it was a Y, not a diamond. So if there's less kids, you need less teachers.
You're talking about a time when heating oil was 25 cents a gallon. You're talking about a time when a teacher's salary or a guidance counselor's salary was probably $8,500 a year. You, you have to put it into the perspective of the current economy. And what that gentleman said last night was too bold. He didn't say just that his cost of operating his business was increasing and his revenues that were unpaid were increasing. He did say that. And I recognize that. I experienced the same thing in my own business. What he also said was he had a two-year-old son that he's going to be sending to the school system. And I suspect someday he's going to be looking at retiring and walking away from that business and quite possibly turning that business over to that son. How is he going to do that if that son doesn't have the ability to go out and get an engineering education and to take over his father's business?
That business is not going to be there, Joe.
Do you think by funding the budget at almost $30 million that somehow this, this two-year-old kid is not going to get a quality education? This, I don't, I'm having trouble with all of this, you know?
I'm not, I'm not taking issue with the fact that this is a lot of money, Don. What I'm taking issue with is, show me where we balance this budget. If they're wrong.
Give me their.
No, they're not wrong, Joe. What I think Al's saying, and I think we're saying, is we're conceding that, that yeah, possibly people may have to get laid off. I think that's a possibility here.
I respect the fact that Rose identified $225,000 in questionable salaries. I think they should go.
No, but I also identified some other positions that are in the budget that could be filled through attrition. And that was also at over 200.
You did do that on several positions.
And that was over $200,000 also. So that's another $200,000.
Assuming that number is correct, and you're up to $400,000 and Al's number comes in where it's, where he's projecting it to be, that's $300,000. We're still cutting the half million dollars that we're not allocating from any other source.
So that's what we did last year almost, Joe, isn't it? We cut 400,000.
We absolutely did not. We got a rational explanation of the increase that they were asking for. And we only cut what we did not have the ability to identify as a source of funds that was going to come from them from some other place. We didn't just arbitrarily make up a number and say, that's the thing to do because it's bad economic times. I'll concede it's bad economic times. But what you're talking about is eviscerating the educational system because you don't agree with their number. Show me where the number is wrong and I'm on your side.
The number may well be right.
Let's see them.
But it still has to be cut.
Our books are closed. Have we?
The, the number may be right, Joe. I'm, I'm not, you know.
There may be justification for a million five cut in their budget. I don't know that. All I'm taking issue with is making an arbitrary decision that because they asked for a million 250, we're cutting a million 250. That's not governing.
I don't think it's arbitrary. I think a lot of people put a lot of thought into it.
Tax increase to taxpayers is what that's doing, Joe. People can't do it. The state of Connecticut made the largest tax increase in the history of the state last year and we're still $120 billion in the hole.
I'm tired of, of the, of the talk about it's all caused by taxes. Taxes are a problem.
Big problem.
But it's not, it's not just taxes. You go to the grocery store, your prices are up.
That's right.
You get your fuel oil delivery, you just told us it was $1,200.
You're making my case for me now.
Yeah, I'm making the case for you because the cost of living has increased.
Right, and it's ridiculous and nobody can pay it anymore, Joe. That's why the state's going to be a goldmine in ten years.
Sit here and then tell the chief down there that he can't replace the tires on his trucks and hopefully we don't kill a fireman going to a fire. Okay, I'm done. Go ahead, take your roll call.
Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
No.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Duddy?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
No.
Counselor Fawnin?
No.
Counselor Fucci?
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth?
Yes.
You know what, Anthony, while we're in between, what was the projected savings for insurance if?
About $450,000 if you spoke to town board.
Between the, the board, do you know what the board side would be on that?
I would say it's 500.
Again, hypothetical.
Yeah, three quarters of that number probably, four of our one quarter.
About 300,000.
Yeah, but again, it's nice, again.
Very, it's.
It's hypothetical.
Why do I play hypothetical games?
Moving on to general government. What's the order? Moving on to general government. Page 25 it starts.
Sound colored book?
What did we, what we do up on in the general government of the last year?
Actual. 11 was 15.
Why is?
It's up 1,000.
Oh, 1,549 from 1,483.
Right.
Why are we on zero now? I mean, why are we on? Town manager's up. Why is he up?
Do you want a summary of where we are and on the town side and general government?
Mm-hmm.
During my presentation, I had a listing of the major budgetary increase. There are some, some minor savings with certain things. As Anthony and you earlier tonight noticed that there's a decrease or a slight increase in, in our Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield rates. So we, we've adjusted that downward. Point 1.7 is the best we've done in several years. There are small increases in central services for control of the outlying buildings. The assessor has a small increase in, in that budget for personal property tax audits and some part-time staff. There was a fairly large increase, $20,000 in the town attorney's budget line for litigation expense. The police department, there were two significant increases. One was in tuition, which is contractual. And the other one was in fuel, based on the new price of fuel and the amount of gallons that they consume. I think it's 80,000 gallons a year. If memory serves me, you're 30,000, one of those two large numbers. Fire department, there was a increase of $45,000, plus or minus, in equipment repairs and upkeep. And there was a $7,500 increase for thermal imaging cameras, if you recall the chief's presentation. In contingency, we had a 1% set aside for salary increases for full-time employees. That's matched with a 1% increase, so about $60,000, $63,000 in contingent and $63,000 spread throughout the budget of town government for a total of 2% budgeted increase for all full-time employees, including non-union. Big increase in employee leave liability. This is the depart, the departure cost when folks are retiring. And previously, we've been taking it out of non-budgeted funds. And this year, at the request of the Treasury Finance Director, we're putting $120,000 as a budget placeholder. So we actually have that expense estimated in advance. And I think Anthony Opev was, was the same as last year. There's a decrease of about $5,000.
Yeah, 6,000, 315, 309.
Right.
All right, if we go to page 27 and we look at the mayor and the council. Um, what do we got going on? Why are we up over?
We're up 1,000.
We're up $1,000 over last year?
That's the last year of the current auditor's bid. It was a five-year bid, three, a three-year bid with two singular extension. And his proposed fee for the upcoming year is up $1,000 more than it was last year. This is the 320. Uh, this will be the last year we use the current auditor, then go out to bid again. That'll be on your next agenda, three, appoint that over.
So the last year of it, it was $1,000 more?
Yes, right. It's 32, if you look in the 320 accounts, $32,000 for the audit this current year was $31,000. Thirty-two, if you look in the 320 accounts, $32,000 for the audit this current year with $31,000.
So where do we come up with $1,000 off of this page?
Not many places.
You mentioned a part-time in the assessor's office, another part-time person?
It's the same, basically the same part-time person, additional hours, I believe is the plan.
What's the professional development for almost $10,000 on this page?
That includes the South Central, our membership to the South Central Regional Council of Governments, which is $3,900 a year, our contribution to the Greater Naven Transit District, and the, that's pretty much it. There's a couple of minor cable advisory council dues, council of small towns.
What's the?
$925.
What's the, I say it's the same number as last year.
Right.
How much is the New Haven Transit? Where's that in there?
That's 4949, I think is the number.
So we got the council of governments and the New Haven Transit. What do those two add up to?
Council of Governments is 3,900, and so it would be 8849 for the two of those. Council of Small Towns is the only group, lobbying group that we belong to. We don't, and in previous years, Connecticut Conference of Municipalities would have come out of this line, and that's been zeroed out for several years.
What did those two come up to?
8849.
8849. Right, and what else do you have in there?
Council of Small Towns.
Cost.
Cost.
$925.
And the cable advisory dues. That's the cable advisory commission, regional. If I can just call the council's attention on all professional development, travel and transportation in any of the departments, and I think they would all testify there's been no increases at all. They've been cut over the last couple of years, at least 10% a year.
Professional development, minus 1,000 out of, let's see, a common number.
319.
319.
Forty-two, ten.
Take $1,000 out of professional development.
Oh, you got the big book out. I gotta get the big book out.
Anthony, what do we have now?
Richard, what's town code updates?
Town code updates, when the town book of ordinances may be changed in the course of a year, it has to be completely reprinted professionally and then rebound, not, I'm sorry, not rebound. Lisa, why don't you answer this question?
When we pass a new ordinance or amend an ordinance, and we update the code or the ordinance, there are publication fees that we have to put into the newspaper, and then we reprint only the pages that are not, we have to change the local.
So if there's changes to the town charter, does that fall underneath this town code updates?
The charter and any ordinance.
Okay.
Both of the publication laws.
Okay.
What's the 450 for ordinances?
Cover part of the legal part. You used two accounts, Anthony, for that just a second.
I'm sorry, say it again.
The 450 for the ordinance.
Part of the legal.
Publication plus, or newspaper?
Yes, it is whatever.
So the two accounts.
Okay.
Right now, you're at point seven eight increase, 28.55.
It'd be the 320. 320. 4110, 320.
What is?
4110, 320, I have access. So that's. It's right here, the contractual.
Oh, the 33.
335.
No, the 1,300.
Oh, down here, the town code update. Take a thousand out of it. Right. So on the 320 line, the town code updates in Department 4110, I'm going to take $1,000 out of the town code updates.
Which book can you work in?
The larger one.
The 1,300. I'm going to take a thousand out of that.
Out of the 1,300.
In the tan book, around page 27, and that's the backup for it.
Well, this says all the breakdowns, the big book.
That's the backup.
Stay with the binder.
Where did you find the $1,000? What line?
Town.
Under the name, under the town code updates.
Under Department 4110.
Other contractual.
Other contractual, 4110.
4110, 320.
You said a thousand, right?
A thousand out of that.
I'll second.
And who made the motion, Al?
Al.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Rose, seconded by Deputy, yeah, I mean, Councilor Duddy, Roca.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Caprio?
Yes.
Council Duddy?
Yes.
Council Esposito?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Fuji?
Yes.
Council Wentworth?
Yes.
Go to finance.
Yeah.
So it's an increase of 1,825.
So that would be, Anthony, where's the 1% built into the salary on this one?
What's the paramoney on that? Sorry.
Town manager?
4125.
It's only on, I believe, I think 18, I don't know.
Well, it's just the total.
Oh.
Great, 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 great. So that number.
That's on the town manager's side, too.
The increase of $1,825 over last year, what's that, where's that come from?
There's an increase in the town manager's salary line of 1%, and that is an error. That was not planned to, or not.
So that's, that's not 1,800, is it?
No, it's part of that, and the other 1% should be in the executive secretary's line.
Yeah, the 164 only has the secretary's rate, the manager's rate is taken out.
Of, not this budget, of this.
164 is right.
164, okay.
Right.
Okay, so, but you didn't adjust the extension for the manager's salary.
No.
Does everyone understand that there's a 1% in this budget for the executive secretary and nothing for the town manager?
Right.
Okay.
So on, under the town manager, the printing and binding, what's that, what's that do?
It covers printing for the three items listed, the manager's budget, which is what you have on your, on your desk, the capital improvements plan, which is done in the fall, and then the annual report, which is pending and which we will be producing in-house at virtually no expense. So if you wanted to cut that, that would be the place to cut that, and we would continue, we would produce it in-house.
What's the 320 line of other contractual?
There's an allocation if we do employee, new employee hires that are handled centrally through personnel costs.
We won't be doing that. So we could cut that if we're not going to hire anyone new? Or would you rather have the, what's it? We got a difference of like 600 and some dollars. You want that to come out of the printing and binding?
I would take it out of printing and binding.
Okay, then what was that number we had?
The total is 1,825 between.
Yeah, but they said the raise was, the 1,825 was. The difference we have printed in our book of $1,825 is not correct?
That includes a 1% increase for the secretary.
That's right.
Only, and then any additional pension, social security, whatever.
I'm going to make a motion to cut $1,000 out of the 303.
I'll second it.
On the 4125 department. That's printing and binding. Taking a thousand?
Yeah.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Rose, seconded by Councilor Fuji. Roll call.
You're, you're taking the annual report fee of 677 and adding 300 and something dollars to it, just an additional cost?
Taking a thousand.
Danny, no cost.
No, the job. That was 677, wasn't it?
677 plus three from the manager's budget. He had three of. All right, well, what else was in there? You got manager's budget, capital. You want, if you, it's your, it's your account, Richard, you want a thousand dollars?
I would do 677 and then go down to employee physicals and hit that for, for the remaining 233.
Where was that? 333.
333.
333, and take out the 575.
33, yeah, whatever.
Okay, do I have to do one line at a time, or can we do them both?
You can do them both in one motion.
I got a question.
Yeah. Anthony doesn't care.
The numbers are wrapped, they're right at one.
Out of 4125, 303, and 323 out of 4125, 320.
Second.
That's what she said.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Duddy. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Caprio?
Yes.
Council Duddy?
Yes.
Council Esposito?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Fuji?
Yes.
Council Wentworth?
Yes.
Richard, did you know that if, you know, being a town manager and the number one guy in town, that if you actually lived in town, you'd probably have a big house like our public works director has? And we'd be getting, you know.
Public works director has a beautiful house.
$10,000 of your salary back. Which one you in?
Finance. Finance.
What are you moving to?
Finance.
Finance.
4130.
2610.
So what do we have in finance? So you got 3.8, 3.8 employees?
That's correct.
What's a point eight? You share somebody in the building?
Negative, she works 28 hours.
28.
She's a payroll person.
So we have a difference from last year to this year of? 2610? Where can you help me find that, Anthony? Or at least some of it? Can we cut back on the hours of the part-time maybe, or?
No.
Office supplies?
Well, if you look at the history on office supplies, last year we spent 1378, two years ago, 718.
You're down 334 and 800.
That's actual.
That's actual throughout the year. We just bought some more checks recently. So it was $800, and then there's been a change in the way that the three-hole papers, three-hole punch paper that we use as being charged to our department now, so that's a $240 increase. If you want, if you want to adjust that number, feel free, we'll make it work.
Al, take it out of the 317 data processing. 2610, it's up, it's up $3,000. 317, 2610.
Right. Can I make a motion in Department 4130, 317, to take out? $2,610.
I'll second the motion.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Rose, seconded by Councilor Fuji. Discussion.
What is that tied to?
Well, I see that there's, there's contracts, are those contracted rates, so those cannot be, those do not get adjusted?
Uh, yes, basically. There is, it's the ACOM laser printing module, that brings up a good point. If you, in the capital plan, there was that change to go to the Windows-based software. If we can do that, those two ACOM laser printing lines?
Yeah.
Will go away.
All right, so.
It's a quick pro quo. If you tell you kill these, make sure you fund the capital aspect of it, so you can go Windows-based and eliminate this third part.
Al, did you hear?
What was that?
If we do the Windows-based funding in the capital, which we want to, we can eliminate these two together.
Actually, you can go 2950.
All right, so I would, I would draw my.
He went a little extra, 2950.
I would draw my 317.
To decrease 4130, 317 data processing by 2950.
2950.
Yeah.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Duddy. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Caprio?
Yes.
Council Duddy?
Yes.
Council Esposito?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Fuji?
Yes.
Council Wentworth? Counsel Winkler?
Tax collector. We moved to the tax collector. Department 4131. Richard, explain the 1 percent raises. Is that, are those hypothetical raises? We just put money in in case somebody got a raise?
Yes. As you know, we're in, we're in the midst of negotiations with all four contractors. Everyone took zeros, including the administrators, this year. In our previous discussions with the town council, I had mentioned that we need to budget something. I had said back in January that the number we were going to choose was 2 percent. We put 1 percent in contingency and 1 percent in each of the operating departments.
Okay.
And tax collector, why is printing and binding so high?
Because we're paying to print the tax bills on a contractual basis.
No.
No?
Printing and binding, per state statute, towns are required to print the posted rate book, which is a document that both tax collector prints as well as the assessor every year for their, all their various grant lists. But honestly, it's probably one of the greatest wastes of money that we do because not a soul looks at those books. For most times, we have a vault next door loaded with years of those books. However, to comply with the state statutes, we're required to print those books up. We looked a couple of years ago at doing it, just doing it on plain paper. And taking a shot, and we'd rather be compliant with the state statute and have them printed properly. And that's, that's what the increase there is to do a little catch-up. There's been a couple of years we haven't done them, so this is to try to catch up on some of the posted rate books.
What's the downside of not catching up this year?
Uh, I don't honestly know.
If we haven't done it. Could the state, like, kick us out and we don't have to send money up there?
They could secede maybe, or something.
How much difference were we up on this one? Could we fund part of it? Take it up.
Take another one.
Oh, we're going to take this 7156. Printing and binding, 303.
Yeah, I'm going to go with Department 4131, 303, printing and, printing and binding, and reduce that to zero. So that's 7156.
Second.
Moved by.
Isn't there a cost with even printing the way he's printing it now?
Well, actually, we're at zero.
Yeah, if we print them, print friendly, it'd be through the post, through the printer front, so it'd be no cost. It'd be in the.
Fine.
Michelle, will you?
Yep.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Rose, seconded by Counselor Duty. Roll call.
Mayor Candylora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counsel Angeloni?
Yes.
Counsel Caprio?
Yes.
Counsel Duddy?
Yes.
Counsel Esposito?
Yes.
Counsel Fawnin?
Yes.
Counsel Fuji?
Yes.
Counsel Winkler?
Yes.
Now we're at the assessor. Going to go, um... Department 4132, the part-time. That went from 4,631 to 10,551. So I'm going to look to take, um, take that difference out of there.
Christine, can you just, or someone, just, what was that for? Increasing the hours due to on the part-time person in the assessor's office?
Right, increasing hours for part-time person. Just to open up work in my office.
With the revow and
Pardon?
Because of the revow and.
Because of revaluation, and we have a lot of pending litigation cases and spending so much money for litigation. And we had to hire someone to do the fieldwork last year that I could not do. And I've spent over 200 hours of overtime. Six, seven days a week for months to try to catch up on what I'm doing. So I tried to put in a few extra hours for a part-time person to cover some of these hours and go back to doing my own fieldwork.
All right, I'll, I'll rescind that motion, but I'll, I'll go to same department, same line, and reduce it by 4,000.
But then what effect would that have on the 120 account, the pension and social security? Would it have any effect? Yes, yes, it would.
It would. 1.45 percent for medical or part-time. We can work the numbers in.
Christine, what is the increase in other contractual line 320?
I think that's personal property tax audits, Counsel.
Audit?
Audit.
Wait, we got a motion on the floors still for the.
Yeah, for four, to reduce it by 4,000.
Rose, $58.
Is that my calculator with me?
4,058.
That's on the 4132, right? My item 102.
Do you want to rescind that out and change the number?
No, I'm going to leave that, and then we're going to do the other one.
Well, it's.
Yeah, you changed it to 4,000, right?
It's.
I changed that to 4,000. I rescinded the first one. Yeah, and I, I seconded it.
Okay.
And then the
All right.
Do you want to include the pension and social security? Because that's $58 difference with that $4,000 cut. It also reduces that $58.
Right, so we'll, uh, include the pension and social security with it?
So the motion is $4,058. Moved by Deputy Mayor Rose, seconded by Counselor Duty. Roll call.
Mayor Candylora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counsel Angeloni?
Yes.
Counsel Caprio?
Yes.
Counsel Duddy?
Yes.
Counsel Esposito?
Yes.
Counsel Fawnin?
Yes.
Counsel Fuji?
Yes.
Counsel Winkler?
Then on the same page, Department 4132, other contractual, 320. Reduce that 5,000 by 5,000. That's your, going out and doing personal audits of, like, businesses or whatever?
Right.
And, you know what, you're going to find a bunch of empty buildings and guys that are, got their doors chained up because they didn't pay their bills, so I think, um, we can do without it this year.
I'll second that.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Rose, seconded by Counselor Fucy. Roll call.
Mayor Candylora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counsel Angeloni?
Yes.
Counsel Caprio?
Yes.
Counsel Duddy?
Yes.
Counsel Esposito?
Yes.
Counsel Fawnin?
Yes.
Counsel Fuji?
Yes.
Counsel Winkler?
Yes.
How much more is left?
I would just say that our history with personal property audits has been
Been good.
A significant, a significant return when we expend that money to do that. And there are some people that we would like to review their records, and I think it's, it's probably money well spent, quite honestly, but
Well, I'm open to suggestions. You guys have someplace else in this?
You got $5,000?
What do we got in data processing on this one?
Printing and binding, 303.
If I could suggest something.
How about data processing, 317?
Go ahead, Richard.
Go ahead.
I don't know that you can touch data processing. I think that's a contractual
Okay.
in, in this line, but if, if we reserve judgment on personal property tax audits until this time next year, you could do a contingent transfer into the assessor's office and pick up a few audits by the end of this year, by the end of next year at this time. So you'd still, still have the opportunity to go back and revisit it if we had the cash next year at this time.
How about the end of this year?
You can do the same thing. You can do it this year, too. As soon as we get the, all the FEMA deals settled, and, you know, there'll be, there'll be some money in contingent.
For part-time, we let, we decided to leave one?
No, we, we took 4,000.
We took 4,000, all right. So as far as assessment fields?
They're the same. Again, on this account, we've, um, under a few of the subheadings, like heating fuel, we've consolidated, for example, the former recreation center and the former senior center will have to have a minimum amount of heat for the winter upcoming where they may not be falling under the Parks and Recreation budget or the senior center budget. So we, we've moved those costs over to here. Town hall is a fairly realistic number.
What's the motor fuel and lubricants? There's no way that you buy fuel, or just, just for central services, gasoline, but, uh...
That's for the, the pool vehicles that we have here, I believe. Fred, that's the charge that gets sent back for the four fleet vehicles that we have here.
Okay, I made a motion out of 4136 to remove 10,000 from the postage account, line 309.
I'll second it.
What exactly does this post, is this all the tax bills and? Okay.
Look at the last two years of history. You're talking 26 and 28,000 dollars in the last two years. You bring it down to 22, which seems, as postal rates increase extraordinarily low.
So then, why don't we reduce it?
Yeah.
5,000?
No. How much was in the, um?
Well, it's, it's.
What was the increase you saw before?
27, actual.
No, what was the increase you, you talked about before?
In, I mean.
I'll reduce it to 8,000.
Reduce it to eight in.
Yeah, I want, I'm a motion, I'll change it to reduce it to 8,000.
We got, we, don't we at least have to fund what it was last year?
Yeah.
Actually went up?
Well, we're hoping we don't have to mail that much more. We're at 11,000 half-year, so, you know. The rest of the year, 22,000, you're still. Well, the actual in 2,000.
Yeah, but the postage rate just went up in January, so the half-year mark just finished, so.
Transfer, maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could take, um, I, I'll make a new motion. Anthony, they can transfer.
Maybe do what, like 42.5, would that be more reasonable?
So, um, I'll change, I'll change my motion to 8,000 with minus in, take $8,000 off of postage. I'll second it.
Moved by Counselor Duty, seconded by Counselor Fucy. Roll call.
Mayor Candylora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counsel Angeloni?
No. This seems too low to me.
Counsel Caprio?
No, we should at least fund what we did last year, I would think.
It's too low, but.
Well, why don't we? Would you like to discuss what the number should be on that, before we?
Well, last year was what, 20,000?
The, the thing, the thing is, and my thought, my thought is, after April, they could transfer within their line items. So if they have to make a transfer to cover an overabundance of postage, then they could make that transfer. It's done in every department in the history of this town. I, I could nitpick every little item there is in the budget, but.
So you're just taking a number, and they have to pull it from elsewhere to do that, is what you're saying?
Right. And there's enough in that, but if you want to take $5 from this account, or $15 from that account, or $200 from that account, we could do it tonight. Right. But we'll, we'll be here till tomorrow morning. Right. So let the department head, let the department head that earns their money make the changes and the necessary arrangements.
Well, then, can we just, let's finish this roll call and then let's have a discussion, because then that leads to another question. So where, where was the last roll call?
I was the last one.
Counsel Duddy?
Yes.
Counsel Esposito?
No.
Counsel Fawnin?
No.
Counsel Fuji?
Yes.
Counsel Winkler?
No.
So what was the count?
Four yeses, five no's.
Okay, so the motion failed. So if the thinking is to come up with an, just pick an account to pick a number and then tran, do transfers later on, can't we just do a cut in general and not pick a line item?
You mean a bottom line for the department? Bottom line for the department.
Why not?
You're not taking a line item.
Line items.
Either line. That's what we're trying to do.
I know, but what I.
It's the same thing as, as the bottom line. You're going to transfer the money after, is what we're saying. You can transfer in April. So, I mean, what we're doing is foolish.
You'll end up with more, potentially more line item transfers at the end of the year, because more lines will be potentially blown. You won't know which is going
Right.
to which. There are some bigger budget lines in, in this account if you're looking at facilities maintenance is.
Pull it out of that.
And what we've tried to do is consolidate the outlying buildings, Reynolds Beer's House, Auger House, Community Center, and the other town built.
Okay, so do you have a suggestion, Richard, as to what accounts we should look at?
He just told you.
I'm not sure how much you're looking to cut.
We're looking to get to, to the same number we had last year.
Then if you're, if you're going to do that, then I would suggest you look at facilities maintenance. Make the cut in facilities maintenance, and if we run into
And that's $8,000, so that's the same as.
If we run into woodpecker problems at the Little Red Schoolhouse, for example, we find the money and then, and then potentially have to reimburse it out of contingency or some other account at the end of the year.
Just get a cap.
Well, I'll make a, I'll, I'll rescind my last motion. But, or, it failed. And I'll change my motion to take $8,000 out of, um... eight thousand dollars out of forty-one thirty-six, three eleven, facilities maintenance.
I'll second the motion.
Which leaves it the same as last year.
Motion made, Counselor Duddy, seconded by Counselor Fucy, roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Duddy?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fuji?
Yes.
Counselor Whitmore?
Yes, can I ask what the building equipment is for Central Services?
What the building equipment is for, for thirty-five hundred dollars?
Says each back unit in the fire marshal's office.
That is, that's the last of the units that have not been placed for the hotel-type ones, so those produced P M U S, the air conditioning for the Albert Blue offices.
I'll make a motion to reduce forty-one thirty-six, four oh two, building equipment by thirty-five hundred dollars.
Building equipment?
Yeah. Four oh two, that's the air conditioner.
I'll second that.
But it's all part of the, the heating, is the heating and the air conditioning for the fire marshal's office?
Does he have no heat if this is eliminated?
It's working now, it's the last one that's part of this, we've replaced over the last several years, all of the individual side-mounted units.
So if that's what we replace, it'll be out of contingency if it breaks?
Yes, yes, if it breaks, we'd have to come back to you and ask for a transfer or.
Can we try to squeeze another year out of it?
Moved by Counselor Duddy, seconded by Deputy Mayor Rose, roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Duddy?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fuji?
Yes.
Counselor Whitmore?
Yes. Okay, under forty-one thirty-six, line item three twenty by two thousand dollars.
Which one, three twenty?
Two thousand.
On what, what line?
Three twenty, other contractual.
Those are contracts that we have, the vendors?
That amount is?
Actually, it takes the miscellaneous contractual work out of this for Central Services, so if we run into problems, then we need to hire contractors, we'll have to come back to you. There is also in the budget, in speaking of this line, we are in the process of looking at our current cleaning contractor, and as I said earlier during the, I think, the regular meeting, we're looking to terminate their services. And we have a performance bond to cover us for the remainder of the year, there's another year left on the contract, this was a low bidder by a substantial amount, and the quality of work has been abysmal, and the department heads would certainly agree to that a hundred percent. So we've budgeted some money in the current contingent account for another fifteen thousand dollars to cover what we believe would be the proper number if we rebid it or whether we get a successor contractor after the performance bond. Does everybody follow that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so if you're going to cut this, I would take it out of the other contractual with the understanding that we would have to come back to you if something breaks and we can't cover it within the budget.
And what was the motion to take two thousand out of?
That was out of three twenty, right, Mike?
Yes. Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Moved by Counselor Duddy, seconded by Counselor Fucy, roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Duddy?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fuji?
Yes.
Counselor Whitmore?
Yes.
I've got a question in three twenty, the fire alarm monitoring in Town Hall for four hundred and fifty-two dollars, what is that?
If the alarm goes up because of a fire or whatever, it's monitored by local protection services, so it goes into the police department and the fire department to be dispatched.
That costs four hundred and some dollars a year?
So he's charging a commercial rate above and beyond the residential rate, then, is
what you're saying? Because most of the times, the alarm company charges twenty dollars a month for a monitor.
Seventy, seventy-fourty-six.
Do we bid this?
I have met with Simplex, Rennell, and I have new quotes for the coming year.
And they're the same?
I haven't reviewed them yet, we're doing specs for everything else, so.
So you have new quotes for it, but you haven't reviewed them, you haven't opened them yet?
No, I only met with MSU.
I mean, I'm not looking to cut that, we have to have it, but it seems, you know, being well aware of what alarms and real high-end alarms that'll monitor anything, I mean, we're getting screwed.
I mean, even my business is twenty-two dollars a month, whatever.
My last, my last motion, which will bring it down to what it was last year, is eighteen hundred dollars out of postage.
Out of what?
Postage.
No, we didn't do postage.
Eighteen hundred dollars.
I threw it out there, please.
Where was it, Mike?
Yeah, postage is three oh nine, forty-one thirty-six, three oh nine, by eighteen hundred dollars.
Second.
We didn't pass that one yet.
We didn't pass it.
The motion was for eight thousand.
So now we're back.
Oh, so now it's eighteen hundred?
Eighteen hundred, moved by Counselor Duddy, seconded by Counselor Angeloni, roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Duddy?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fuji?
Yes.
Counselor Whitmore?
Yes.
Fifteen fifty, fifteen fifty.
You want town clerk?
Right, town clerk. Do you have any suggestions for approximately fifteen fifty?
We probably need to look for a new chair. Professional development, you're already the best town clerk in the state. Do you teach those classes or?
You can take one fifty out of the.
All right, Lisa, taking one for the team.
All right, I'll take it.
All right, here, two oh one, take one hundred, two oh two, take three ninety, three nineteen, take one fifty, that's point shot.
Okay, we'll take it.
Two oh, two oh one, Lisa, Lisa, just go over it once again, two oh one.
I'm sorry, two oh one, one hundred.
Okay.
Two oh two, three ninety.
Three ninety?
Yep. Three nineteen, one fifty. Take two fifty, that's for three feet.
Two fifty, three fifty.
From which one?
So that's seven forty, so that's right. Is that good?
All right, I'll make a motion to forty-one forty, two oh one, to reduce it by one hundred dollars.
Let's make them all in one.
Yeah. Okay, and then two oh two?
By three ninety.
By three ninety, and three nineteen by two fifty.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Duddy, seconded by Counselor Angeloni, roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Duddy?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fuji?
Yes.
Counselor Whitmore?
Yes. Well, that's this year, that should be next year. Sixty-fourty, sixty percent.
We take three thousand.
I don't know.
We take three thousand, we take it in binding.
Okay, in elections, do you have any suggestions on, for sixty-five hundred dollars? Or any part thereof?
What is the maintenance on that, why is that up so much? What is the equipment maintenance, is that, it's up a little bit there?
There are no machines.
Who's in for that?
So far, the state is still paying for maintenance on the machine, but we have to provide batteries for the machines and batteries for the memory cards. I don't know how long the, how the money's going to be there. They keep saying they're not going to pay for it, and then they come back and they say we're paying for it, so they've been decreasing reimbursement little by little as the hobbie money is completed.
Paul, why are you up so much in printing and binding, three oh two, three oh three?
Because we're going to have a primary in August, and we're going to have a election. This is for the ballots.
Primary in August or April?
The following year, the following year, we're going to have a primary.
That is, that's April, that's the primary, the presidential press conference primary, August primary, probably a primary on the Democratic side and the Republican side.
Okay.
And then the November, and then the Democratic, which we have to order a lot more ballots. See, our cost's on constant, so what we ordered for last year, you compare November to November, because this year, November two thousand and twelve, presidential, we're going to have eighty-five, ninety percent voting, whereas last year, we had, what, twenty-three percent?
That's pretty sad.
So the cost for us is on constant.
Right.
And we have to, everything increases. Now, Anthony, do we need that much money in postage? We send out the cards.
Is that for absentee ballots? Absentee ballots?
No, that's print and binders, but that would be, but we can take some money out of postage, maybe drop it down to two hundred, that's the canvas, then. Well, no, Central Services pays.
Central Services pays.
But I, you charge me for that.
Take a little out of equipment maintenance.
So you could drop that down.
Maybe like a thousand or something?
So six fifty out of postage?
Postage.
Make a motion to pull six fifty out of the postage account.
Why don't we want to hold them till we have all of them?
Sure.
Yeah, because what about equipment's maintenance, can we take like a thousand out of that?
We're up from. I was looking at two thousand.
Two?
What are you talking about, three ten?
Yeah, two?
I'll make some if you want me to make some.
Okay, two?
And then we'll see. I'll make a motion to take on three oh three, printing and binding by a thousand dollars.
Which line?
Three oh three.
Three oh three, printing and binding by a thousand dollars.
I'll second that.
We're going to do them all together.
Three ten, equipment maintenance by two thousand.
Three oh nine, okay.
Three twenty, other contractual by a thousand. That gives us four thousand dollars.
What about two oh seven by three hundred?
Two oh seven by three hundred.
Two oh seven, three hundred.
And three oh nine by six.
Right, three oh nine by six fifty.
Three oh nine by six fifty. Want me to read them again?
We have them, okay.
Moved by Counselor Duddy, seconded by Counselor Fucy, roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Duddy?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fuji?
Yes.
Counselor Whitmore?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll take, take the whole thing out of.
Professional development. No, litigation's up twenty thousand, I don't think we're going to have any problems. I'll take sixteen thousand. Is there any projection of what we're going to be looking at for tax assessment appeals?
No.
I think that's why they put down the money.
In finance, we had talked about, Anthony, didn't we talk about?
We had.
This is more of a historical number as well.
It's more of realistic numbers.
Right.
We can reduce it down and transfer money later on, it's a game we play every year.
Right.
Kind of be more realistic and put a number that's up.
Right, we had talked about finance, upping that number to get it more realistic.
Exactly, look the last two years, it was fifty-four last year, seventy-eight two years ago, so fifty is even a low number, quite honestly.
Times are tough, so I'll make a motion for forty-one fifty, line item three sixteen, reduce it by sixteen thousand.
I'll second that.
How much was that?
Sixteen thousand.
Moved by Counselor Duddy, seconded by Deputy Rose, roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Duddy?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fuji?
Yes.
Counselor Whitmore?
Yes.
So we're up to the police department, four twenty.
Building committee?
Technology?
About ethics.
What about police?
Are you skipping to police, is that what you said?
Yeah.
Police. Where are we going to?
Police, man.
Your turn, then.
Fifty-seven, seven twenty-one.
Okay. What number are we looking at to go to zero here?
Fifty-seven, seven twenty-one. Forty-two, ten, I'm sorry.
I think that's why they put down there.
In finance, we had talked about Anthony, didn't we talk about?
We had...
This is more of a historical number as well.
It's more for realistic numbers.
Right.
We can, we can reduce it down and transfer money later on. It's a game we play every year. I mean, gotta be more realistic and put a number that's out there.
Right, we had talked about finance, upping that number to get it more realistic.
Exactly. Look, the last two years, it was fifty-four last year, seventy-eight two years ago. So fifty is even a low number, quite honestly.
Times are tough, so I'll, I'll make a motion for forty-one fifty, light item three sixteen, reduced by sixteen thousand.
I'll second that.
How much was that?
Sixteen thousand.
Moved by Council Duddy, seconded by Deputy Rose. Roca?
Mayor Candy Laura.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose.
Yes.
Council Antoni.
Yes.
Council Caprio.
Yes.
Council Dudy.
Yes.
Council Esposito.
Yes.
Council Fawnin.
Yes.
Council Pucci.
Yes.
Council Wentworth.
Yes.
So we're up to the police department, four twenty.
Building Committee?
Technology? What about police?
You were going ahead.
Are you skipping to police? Is that what you said?
Yeah.
Where are we going to?
Police.
All right, we're on police, babe.
Your turn, Ben.
Okay. What number are we looking at? We go to zero here?
Um, fifty-seven, seven twenty.
Forty-two, ten, I'm sorry.
Before we start, Anthony, can you tell us where we're at?
Oh, sure.
Good. No, only elections.
It got cut.
No, we didn't. We kept money in there. We just reduced it. Yeah, we didn't totally take it out.
Rose, you're at twenty-eight point five one, a point seven four mill increase currently.
One point seven four increase?
Yeah, seven.
Oh, point seven four.
Point seven four.
Point seven four.
And you get this back to zero, and what, sixty-five, four thirty-one, something like that?
We got a long way to go, short time to get there.
What we did last year?
Zero increase?
Yeah.
Nine hundred and seventeen thousand.
Nine hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. Nine hundred and seventeen thousand dollars.
Thousand dollars at a time.
Where the hell is all the increase? No, no, I mean, we just put the police department.
Oh, I'm sorry. Police department, you're at sixty-four.
Sixty-five, right?
To get to a zero percent. To get to a zero percent.
Fifty-eight?
Yeah.
They got, uh, let's see. How come the utilities here is ten thousand less than the requested? What were, what's the difference there? I mean, did they ask for way too much there, or what?
Where was that?
Police department line. See, three oh two.
I think it was, it was based on a historical average for utilities.
Now they get Wallingford Electric?
Yeah.
No.
No.
There you are. Yeah, huh?
One of the things with utilities too, we participated in a recent auction, it was a company in the government, and the kilowatt hours rate went down about two fifty per kilowatt hour. So between the town side and the board, Board of Ed side, you can see significant decrease in the cost of electricity coming in here.
On supply, on supply, not transmission.
Right, right, same thing. Well, Chief, what do you suggest? You're back there. Nothing? I just gotta take my pick, huh?
I got some options.
You do? Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight what?
Thousand.
Fifty-eight thousand?
Thousand.
There you go.
We need another one. Okay. Sure, you got credit for it, I mean.
I got a question.
Sure, anything.
Are you looking for six million, Colin?
Yeah.
That's the number?
Yeah. That's fine, the fifty-seven, if that's your increase.
Well, it's fifty-seven, seven twenty-three.
Right.
Now, the thirty-one was in the cars, the cars were in the year before. There's a thousand dollars difference between last year and this year in the car. There's a thousand dollars difference between last year and this year in the car. So thirty thousand is not the cars. Well, we have thirty-one thousand off, that's thirty thousand. Yeah, it's up one thousand dollars. But he's looking for fifty-seven thousand. Fifty-six after that. Hey, Ben?
Yes, sir.
I can give you, we're not too happy with this organization, you have South Central Criminal Justice Board?
Yeah.
Three twenty account.
Okay. The whole deal?
Eleven eight.
Eleven eight, okay. What's your equipment maintenance, as far as what, like your cars, or what is it?
Equipment maintenance, that's our radar, radar repairs, putting in the sheets and blankets for the cell box, the coffee machine, thirty dollars a coffee, nine twenty-four eight a coffee, complete line of all the parts and repairs, new made in County Clarus, in Missouri, tires for a few vehicles, and four hundred and twenty-five dollars for a shredder.
All right, what do we?
All right, I'm gonna make a motion. Can I make a motion?
Cut.
I'll make a motion. Only because we got two vehicles, it might get a couple grand there.
All right, so we'll do four thousand out of equipment maintenance?
Which one is that? Equipment maintenance?
Three ten.
All right, what do you got, Ben?
Eleven eight out of three twenty.
Three twenty.
And out of three ten, two thousand.
I'm gonna make a motion.
Oh, he's got, Vinny's got a motion.
I'll second Vinny's motion.
The eleven eight into two thousand?
Yes.
Eleven eight.
Out of three twenty and two thousand out of three ten.
Out of three ten.
So that's thirteen eight total?
Right.
Yes.
Thirteen eight. All right, moved by Council Caprio, seconded by, who seconded? Uh, Council Esposito. Roca?
Mayor Candy Laura.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose.
Yes.
Council Antoni.
Yes.
Council Caprio.
Yes.
Council Dudy.
Yes.
Council Esposito.
Yes.
Council Fawnin.
Yes.
Council Pucci.
Yes.
Council Wentworth, yes.
Mr. Caprio?
Yeah.
On the one oh two account?
Yeah.
I want to see if it's standard or town, full part-time, secretary's department, board and commission.
Oh, that's the secretary's pay? Is that what that is, a twelve hundred?
Yeah, it's the secretary who...
But they get paid so much of a meeting. Better, yeah. Is there any movement in the motor fuel and lubricants?
Yeah, we're not probably, that probably went up.
I just thought it was a, I know it's not bad, but I thought maybe two thousand or something.
I'd like to make a motion. Go ahead, Mike. Okay, I wanna reduce line item one oh one, full-time by twenty thousand dollars.
Could you repeat that, please?
Line item one oh one by twenty thousand dollars. Light item one oh three by ten thousand dollars.
We can't keep up with that. Light item one oh one, twenty.
Light item two up, two oh two by a thousand dollars.
What was that?
Two oh two. Two oh two, technical supplies by a thousand dollars.
Where's two oh two?
And, 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 two oh, two oh, two oh nine by ten thousand dollars.
One oh one was twenty thousand, two oh two was five thousand. Twenty thousand, two oh two, five thousand, two oh two, ten thousand. Oh, ten thousand.
Not oh two.
One oh three was ten thousand.
One oh three was ten thousand.
Two oh nine was ten thousand. I'll, I'll clarify my motion. The motion to reduce, under the town ordinance, due to difficult financial times, to reduce the salary of the police chief by twenty thousand dollars, which was proposed by Council Caprio last year, but failure by the Board of Police Commissioners, due to, due to this, resulted in the unfunded monies in the police full-time account for this year. Now it has, now it's too late to do this, in this year's budget, so it has to be corrected in the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen budget.
Is that over for discussion? Was there a second on that?
Well, so it was twenty, and then ten is thirty, and a thousand in technical is thirty-one, and what was the other one, two oh nine?
Ten and, yeah, two oh nine.
Is another ten?
Yeah.
You're at twenty, thirty, forty, fifty. You're right there.
That's forty-one thousand, and we already did thirteen. We already, we already did thirteen eight. And this motion is...
Gets us close.
Right. Is forty-one thousand.
And how much did we cut on Vinny's motion?
Thirteen eight.
If you make the motion to reduce my pay by twenty thousand, is that what you're saying right now?
Well, it's the one oh one account for twenty thousand.
The one oh one?
Yeah, I like that clarification too. Is it the account, or is it a specific employee's pay?
Specific employee's pay.
So you're moving to reduce the chief's pay by twenty thousand dollars?
Under the town ordinance, that was approved, we could, do the...
Can we do that?
Yeah, due to financial difficulty, yeah, it's in there.
Now what defines financial difficulty for a, for a department head? Is there a definition in there?
Mr. Mayor, with your indulgence, I'll read from section seventy-seven dash six of the town ordinance, expenses to be paid by the town. With respect to the salary of the chief and deputy chief of police, the town council shall accept the recommendation of the police commissioner, commission, unless in the sole discretion of the town council, it determines that the public interest and the financial capability of the town, including consideration of other demands on the financial capability of the town, requires compensation in a lesser amount.
He's not here.
Yeah. I mean, my opinion is just, when we're getting into ordinances, we should have the town attorney give an interpretation of ordinances and laws, before we start cutting department heads, regardless of which department we're in. Cause we could all interpret that in a different way.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna interpret it exactly the way I see it. I think it's vindictive, it's counterproductive, and it's not, it's not a justified reduction in expenditures. I'm totally opposed to it. If there is, if there is a line item cut, I'm perfectly prepared to entertain that, but I'm not going after any people, out of, out of any attempt to get any sort of revenge. I just think that's totally inappropriate.
Mr. Mayor, I speak. You know, this is completely retaliation. I expected this. I hope the council's above it. This is retaliation from, the cut that the council made last year. The Board of Police Commission is having a tough decision. I just hope you use some good judgment. I've always been fair with the town council, you know that. I'm a town employee and a town, a town resident for forty-three years. I'm the senior employee in the town. And for somebody to make that motion, that motion, you know, as well as I do, was coming from Council Fawnin, Dick, and Phil, I think. Please use good judgment.
If it's permissible, I'm gonna move that we divide that motion into each element, each line item that was proposed to be reduced, so we vote line item by line item.
I'll second. Is that a motion?
Yep.
Do we need to vote on that, or?
I believe you have to mo, um, vote on the motion to divide.
What?
The motion to divide?
He wants to separate each one.
Why don't we just make them independent?
That's what we're doing.
So I need to make a motion to do that, or?
Well, the motion was on the...
Oh, okay.
On the floor, I don't know if anyone seconded.
I seconded.
Thing is, if we, if we do the money, we should let the police commission decide, just like we did last year.
I will draw, I will draw the personnel part of it, and I'll make it to the, the full-time account.
Because then I think it's up to the police commission's discretion to make the cuts where they see fit.
So then it would be a twenty thousand dollar cut to the one million four hundred and eighty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars?
To the one oh one account.
One oh one account, right.
And then the police commission has to decide.
So the police commission would have to find twenty thousand out of that somehow.
And are we voting on just that one oh one account, or all the accounts?
Well, he withdrew...
I understand.
The portion about...
So I guess we'd be voting on all of them now?
So, it's the twenty to ten...
The twenty to ten, the thousand, and the other ten?
The other ten, unless you wanna do them all separately.
I think they should be done separately.
I think they should be separate as well.
All right.
Otherwise, I'm gonna be compelled to...
I will, I will draw my motion, and I'll, I'm gonna make a motion to forty-two ten, one oh one, full-time account by twenty thousand dollars.
I'll second that.
What if we take the overall budget and tell us what the additional, you're looking for a hundred and twenty thousand, if we can't do it out of full-time because of contractual issues, if we can come up with twenty in the rest of the budget, is that fair?
I think so.
Well, last year when we asked you for the hundred and ten, and you came back on the one oh one account.
What's that?
Last year when we asked for a hundred and ten, you came back with the one oh one account, but it wasn't reduced by a hundred and ten thousand out of the one oh one account. So, that was, that's probably part of the reasoning, is that you didn't make up the hundred, that a hundred and ten thousand out of the one oh one account.
You didn't take the whole cut that we did.
It wasn't out of the one oh one account, that was the, that's the issue.
Right.
They came up with a hundred and ten thousand cut, but it wasn't out of the one oh one.
And we said one oh one.
Right, they said one oh one. They came back...
Right, they said one oh one.
So that's, that's why we're going more through the accounts.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, excuse me, could we back up a moment, so we can keep track of this for the record? Can, we have a motion from Council Fawnin, seconded by Council Esposito, to divide the original motion. I withdrew the original. The original motion was withdrawn, so therefore, their, the motion to divide is moved. Is everybody agreeing with that? Okay.
I just have, I just have...
Did you take, last year, I'm not mistaken, did you guys decide that it was out of the one oh one?
You guys came back and said, told us that, because you had to look for it, and then you said you would take it out of the one oh one, that's what, I remember, you guys did that.
I, I just have, I just have, we still in discussion?
Yeah.
I just have one, one concern with this one oh one account. After looking at this, everybody is contractual, except the management. Therefore... Therefore, in my opinion, and this is just my opinion, the only non-contractual is the administrator. So therefore, in my view, cutting that money from the one oh one account, it's still isolated to, to one individual, which could be...
No, right, Richard.
Unless I'm wrong, I mean, it's still...
Well, they may have retirements, and then if they don't, still right away...
Somebody leaves early? It was done for a hundred and ten last year, and, and they only got eighty-three out of it, so...
You know, we, we were told that Officer Papalizio is retiring, so if he retires, and by the, you know, the position hasn't been filled yet on there, so there may be some savings by the time when and if they get an officer in this, in the place. Correct. Well, there's, there's a lot of different accounts. It's, it's not that they didn't come up with the hundred and ten thousand, it's when they came back to us to tell us what account, they took it all out of the one oh one account, and not, and didn't take account into the other accounts that it would be affected.
When I went down to finance, and I asked if the benefits are involved with that cut of a hundred and ten, and finance said yes, in fact, it was a hundred forty-four thousand dollars cut total out of my budget between salaries, um...
Retirement.
Cleaning, clothing, educational, and medical. It was a hundred forty-four thousand dollars taken out of the budget. So I was told that specifically, out of the one oh one account, you do not have to take the whole one ten, because we're compensing the, the entire employee that was left out. It was two hundred one forty-four.
Now, who told you that?
Anthony. I had, I had a friend out, that gave to the Board of Police Commissioners, um, of what the person that was laid off, exactly how much he made, and all the benefits, social security, everything, he said you're fine.
That was the same chief the council had, that the line...
Correct.
Horizontally. Correct. The budget was cut a hundred and ten, you're a hundred percent correct, and math correct, and it affected other accounts, but those other accounts were not adjusted. Tell you what, the next council agenda is to adjust those accounts.
Right.
Run by finance. Can you agree with that? You recall, we couldn't do those adjustments before April first, because they're getting into department.
Right. I under... Right, well, we understand all of that part. The, I guess the point is, is when you were given that information, when you came up to, it was told to us, just take it all out of the one oh one, instead of saying, and it's all in semantics, is that the, the, the salary out of the one oh one account and all benefit accounts that are related to it.
What it really, I'm sorry, but what it really came down to was, the only way to reduce that type of money was to reduce...
Right, and I'm, I'm not disputing that.
You know, so that was the, that was the whole person in the whole budget. And, and now reducing the one oh one count, when everything's contractual, like Councilman Dooty said, was to take it out of the chief's pay, is what it comes down to. So if the one oh one does get reduced, that's really, if we're forced to take it out of the one oh one...
No, because we were told that Officer Papalizio is retiring. So the thinking on this is, if he retires, whether it's May, June, or July, that position wouldn't be filled immediately, so there would be cost savings when and if you replace the officer, from the point, because he, if you have to replace him, and you have to get someone into school, into the academy, it may not happen right away. So you may have two to three months' savings in salaries, four months, whatever it is, that there could be savings there.
He retires in May, and we wait three months, there's three months of salary.
All right, I want to vote on this motion.
Which one are we voting on?
The split.
We're voting on the split.
Yes.
We're voting to cut to twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah, we're voting to chop it up.
Dividing of the motion, I want to get that done.
Mayor Candy Laura?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Dooty?
Yes.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fuji?
Yes.
Councilor Wentworth?
All right, now Ben, what was the original cut that you had?
The first two that we passed, I think, was eleven eight.
It was thirteen eight.
And there's two thousand from the other account, the, uh, three ten account. So it was thirteen eight total.
Right.
So that already got approved?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's approximately forty-four thousand. If you want to give him to zero, it's approximately forty-four thousand left.
Right.
And Mike's motion was twenty thousand out of the one oh one account, just twenty thousand, not saying where, just twenty thousand out of the one oh one. That Mike made, and Al, and Al seconded it.
Is that retirement a definite thing?
That's my question. We're making a guessing game here. We don't know if he definitely retired. We've been talking, maybe he will, maybe he won't.
So if he doesn't retire, where's this money come from out of that, out of that account?
Well, how to delay, there's two guys in school right now?
Yeah.
They graduate in July, how to delay the start?
You got a comment on this, Richard?
Well, if, um, we delay the start of two people coming out of the academy after FTO, there will be some to, to handle the shift, there's going to be an overtime expense as well. You save something, and, and the chief would have to get back to us and tell us what that staffing cost would be, if we're trying to fill the shifts without the new employees already running.
The two folks that you're already paying, you can't just not pay them for a period of time.
They have to actually be laid off for July, for, for a period of time.
Papalizio did say his leave.
Because they're, they're already on payroll.
Papalizio did say his leave.
It's the whole year, so...
When he's gonna retire?
If he doesn't retire in July, and he retires in October, there's, there would still be savings.
He's only got three months to retire.
I'm sure he wants to get out, that's for sure.
The look is, he's gotta go, but at the last minute, he may change his mind, but now his...
We could, we could look at it then, or take it out of contingency if we have to. I'm sure he's gonna...
But it's a, it's basically the police commission's discretion, once we do the account, and they pick where it comes from.
Out of the one oh one.
Out of the one oh one.
Mayor Candy Laura?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Dooty?
Yes.
Councilor Esposito?
No.
Councilor Fawnin?
No.
Councilor Fuji?
Yes.
Councilor Wentworth?
No.
Okay, I move to take, um, out of forty-two, ten, one oh three, um, ten thousand dollars.
I'm sorry, what line item is that?
Forty-two, ten, one oh three, overtime, by ten thousand dollars.
I'll second that.
Can you check with, I, I, is that going to fall out of town now?
Sure.
I know it's over here. In the main, vacation time.
Is that a true number, Anthony, because you don't have FEMA back yet?
Uh, hang on. You're a hundred and thirty-eight, five out the door, in overtime.
What's the percentage?
What, what's a bill for FEMA?
One thirty-eight out of one sixty-four. I know, we had a bunch of educated here, man. What's that mean?
What's reimbursement?
Eighty-four percent.
Anthony, what's reimbursement due back from FEMA?
Uh, nothing to that.
Nothing at all?
It goes to the separate fund, county forty.
March forty-second, it was eighty, eighty point six percent.
All right, so how much was spent by FEMA that we're gonna reimburse? How much, how much reimbursement did we put into overtime? Oh, we gotta play, we gotta play it right.
We're making you work this year, Anthony.
We're gonna get money, and we're gonna get money back from the government.
Anthony, you didn't take FEMA, you didn't take that overtime.
No, no, it didn't affect the line at all.
No.
That's what I said.
So those two storms, all those guys working, uh...
Yeah, nothing got charged to the department, all got charged to separate fund.
So take out two major storms, and we'll be all set.
So Anthony, the one thirty-five is, is in addition to what FEMA was charged.
That is exactly right.
Plus, we're down two men, so next year we'll be up even. We're down a whole bunch of guys.
Do we have a second?
I said one.
Yeah.
Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura?
No.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Dooty?
Yes.
Councilor Esposito?
No.
Councilor Fawnin?
No.
Councilor Fuji?
No.
Councilor Wentworth?
No.
Okay, I move, um, item forty-two, ten, two oh two, by a thousand dollars.
I'll second that. Two oh two, technical supplies.
Two oh two, how much is that?
Thousand bucks.
Is that two oh two by a thousand?
Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Dooty?
Yes.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fuji?
Yes.
Councilor Wentworth?
Yes.
Okay, I move forty-two, ten, two oh nine, by ten thousand dollars.
I'll second that.
Oh, yeah, right. Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura?
Right, yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Dooty?
Yes.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fuji?
Yes.
Councilor Wentworth?
Yes.
What's the total cut?
I got a question on, on two oh eight, heating fuel. What did you guys do this winter? Last winter, we had four feet of snow, all kinds of cold weather, and you burned twenty-four hundred dollars worth of fuel, heating fuel. This year, we have the mildest winter on record, and we're projecting, you know, thirty-six hundred. And, you know, I know fuel went up, but you probably burned, you should have burned a third less oil. I mean, that's realistically what, by degree days, everybody would have done, so, I mean, did we leave the door open, or what?
The actual right now is nineteen twenty, suspended, so the projection might be off.
So I'm gonna move to cut the two oh eight, eight account by five hundred bucks.
Second. Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Dooty?
Yes.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fuji?
Yes.
Councilor Wentworth?
Okay, um, on forty-two, ten, one ten straight time training, by five thousand dollars. If you look over the history, it was ten thousand, eight thousand. Um, one oh one, a one ten straight time training, and it, now it's up to sixteen thousand.
One to one ten.
If you follow the history back, there's not much spent in there.
Because you're at an advantage over us, Mike, what, what is that?
Uh, it's just they have some training, um, you know, uh...
That's training for the officers already...
Yeah, they have a couple of training sessions, and some officers go to, uh, you know, refresher training.
I think after this cut, another eight thousand.
We're at fifty-four eight right now. But, I mean, you could see the history there, it's not, it's overfunded.
Is it that much difference?
No, we're not in the half day. You got twenty?
You got, don't forget thirteen eight into twenty, ten.
You wish, you mean eleven eight. Thirteen eight is total.
Twelve.
Thirteen eight is twenty, is total, twenty, ten.
Twenty got voted down.
No, ten in the overtime got voted down.
Oh, ten in overtime got voted down, okay, so, forty-five. So what was it, that was five, right?
Five thousand.
Five thousand.
Could you get a second on that? I'll second it.
We're, we're getting close to our number. No.
Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura?
Could the motion be repeated, please?
Yes, to, to remove, um, five thousand dollars from the one ten straight time training account.
Five thousand. You originally said ten, so you changed it for...
No.
That was overtime. We didn't touch overtime. This is straight time training.
Thank you.
Is that, is that one ten account all contractual, though?
No. If you look in the past, it's ten thousand. Last year was eight thousand. It's, it's just overfunded too much. Bringing it in line.
All right, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Dooty?
Yes.
Councilor Esposito? Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fuji?
Yes.
What's the other contractual that we dropped there?
They got Boeing in there they never asked before.
Did you, did you take the, uh, did you take something out of automotive equipment?
Fifty-three, I think it is, right?
Automotive equipment.
Fifty thousand three hundred?
No. Hang on, that equipment, you could...
Equipment maybe we do. We took two thousand.
Fifty-three hundred, chief.
Fifty-three thousand?
Fifty thousand three hundred.
Five oh three zero zero, you're in. Five zero three zero zero.
What do you want, another five thousand?
I gotta get up to two thirty, so.
Lockdown, we don't, we got...
What do you have for cuts total?
Five zero three zero zero. Thirteen eight, and then, um, thirty-one thousand, which is made up of twenty thousand and a one oh one, ten thousand, two oh nine, one thousand, and a two oh two, that's thirty-one, and that's another five hundred out of two oh eight, and five, five thousand out of one ten.
What's coming out of, uh, one twenty?
Well, there was five hundred out of two oh eight.
Correct.
What's coming out of one twenty with that cut?
I can do that, yeah. We can do that.
Can you figure that out?
Sure.
The overtime failed with ten thousand?
Yes. Yes.
Let me get five.
Yeah, I'll do it. I'll try. I'm gonna go 103 overtime by $5,000.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Duddy?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fuji?
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth?
Well, we need 1,700, and where are you, man? 1,700, and where are you? 55,3 right now. Well, I don't know if we go home, we still got a lot to go, brother.
Lot to go.
And I can't come back tomorrow.
Neither could I, so, gotta keep going.
So let's finish this tonight.
Alright, 17.
If I don't go to sleep, I don't go to sleep. Such is life.
One person decide, and you can always come back.
What account?
Professional development?
Alright, I'll move 319, 1,700.
Professional development?
Yeah.
1,700?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Duddy?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fuji?
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth?
Are we, we gotta be? 57 dollars?
57,000.
Yeah, we had, we had.
We need 57,7.
57,723 is what we had to be at.
Alright, let's move into fire, or what? Where are we, Anthony?
Hang on. You need to do 4,016 out of the 120 account.
Alright, I'll change it to, I'll make a motion for 4,016.
Where are we?
Out of the 120 account.
That's a result of the three cuts you made to payroll related accounts.
4,000.
4,016, 4016.
Out of the 120?
Yeah.
Correct.
Pension social security. So that's the pension, if I could attribute it to those salary tax.
Yes, sir.
Okay, did you make?
I made the motion.
I'll second. This is under the 4210, 120 account from the police department. The pension in social security account, the changes that would be made because of the cuts being made in overtime and.
Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Duddy?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fuji?
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth?
Yes.
So what was the total cut from the police department?
61,0016.
61016?
Yeah, I believe. Right now, we're at 28.46, up 0.69.
61016.
669 increase.
We're on fire?
Yes.
Yeah, we're on fire with the part time. What did we do? Why didn't we go to 56 on our time last year? It was 103 and 107.
The, you see in that last line item there, typically what's historically been done is the entire amount of the stipends, the $1,000 stipends has been budgeted in the 320 account.
Yeah.
And what happens halfway through the year, in fact, what would happen assuming it's council level, is we'll move them up from the 320. The members have an option to take the stipend either as a cash payment as payroll per se, or into a 401A pension plan. So the ones that take it as cash needs to be in that 120, 102 account. So eliminating that transfer we do historically over the last 20 years, let's just do it right the first time, and budget roughly half and half. Half will take it as pension, so it eliminates the transfer down the road for us. That's why it shows, you'll see corresponding if you go to the 320 account, you'll see just the opposite, you'll see everyone down from 107 down to 65, so that's a swap. To tune that out together.
Okay? In his Saturday presentation, didn't the chief tell us there was something he didn't need that was shown on here?
I'm sorry?
When you made the presentation to us that couple of Saturdays ago, wasn't there an item in here that you said you did not need?
The items that I had stated that were basically deleted. And that was the $10,000 imposed, and the $72,000 that are requested were compressed that I received the federal grant for.
But that's in capital.
That was in capital, that's correct.
Yeah, it's not in this budget.
Do you have a ballpark number you're looking for?
Well, your increase is 90,507. So, that would be the most, but it could be less than that. Based on questions that we have.
My question back to you was also dumb, and that is?
No, it's not.
What safety do you want to compromise?
We just want, we just want to know how many tires you actually need.
Well, and that's a good question, because I just finished this week doing a good solid inventory, and I could come back to you with probably a dollar amount tomorrow night. And really, I mean.
We may not be here tomorrow night, we're trying to.
We're trying to be done tonight.
This was like. This was like if we hit heads with a sledgehammer, with a tire vendor, and said, hey, listen, you know, I can't do this anymore. So it was a surprise to me, and as I followed up on it, it was true that's a recommendation by the NFPA, that seven years on the fire apparatus. So that really, you know, takes into consideration a large sum of money.
If you go to the, your 310 account, your equipment maintenance, you don't have tires in the equipment maintenance, do you?
Yeah. There's 20,000.
Some tires?
Yeah, and 45 for repairs.
Got it. So that's where your tires are?
Yes. I mean, kind of be realistic, if I don't have that opportunity to come back in a day, wanna look at splitting it up over a two fiscal year cycle, I'll do my best to work within those parameters.
So you're saying 10 and 10, 10 this year and 10 next?
And again, it costs some of the tires, ready between 500 and 700 each.
No, no, Joe, there's a, Joe, there's a $45,000 increase there, Joe.
That's for repairs?
Yeah.
He's talking about the tires playing up.
But that tire's in the repairs, right?
It's in there, yeah. It's tires and repair, 65,000.
There's 45 for repairs and 20 for tires, so.
But I understood him to be saying he would split up the tires.
Right, the tires.
So it's 10. It'd be 10, right, yeah. It'd be reduction of 10,000 if he did half and half.
How did you guys, how do your budgets work? In your heating oil, you know, you've only spent 15,000, and you, you had 26. I don't see any way you're gonna burn $10,000 gallons, $10,000 worth of oil between now and May. Certainly between now and, so can you, like, buy oil with that, fill your tanks for this year, and then we wouldn't, we could take some money out of the 30,000 for oil for next year? Anthony, how's that work?
Yeah, we can top them off this year. I spent some of this year.
I mean, you should have some extra money there this year, thank God for the weather.
Yeah, that'd be a common practice across the entire spectrum, I believe we'll do that.
So does anyone know what the weather's gonna be next year?
Not here, though.
I'm gonna, if we have all full tanks in July, on the 208 account, I'm gonna take $5,000 out.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Rose, seconded by Counselor Duddy, roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Duddy?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fuji?
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to reduce the 310 account equipment maintenance by $10,000. And that's the, the chief steward said he'd try and do it half and half on the tire replacement.
Alright, second.
Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Fawnin, roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Duddy?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fuji?
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth?
Yes.
Phil, on the technical supplies, you put in $20,000, and the manager raised 75. Can we take that 75 out?
Yeah, you add 7,500 to it.
What is that?
Just elaborate on that? In the town manager's summary of the town government operations, he made comment that 7,500 for thermal imaging camera. The thermal imaging camera request went into capital incentive program, so.
So it can come out of here?
So.
Six of one half a dozen.
Yeah, you drop it back down to 20.
20, thank you. I'd like to move, make a motion to move 7,500 from account 202.
Chief, did you say earlier the rent stayed the same?
Yeah, there was no increase requested by the fire company.
But there's a bump in the.
Mike, just hang on one sec, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Counselor, well, we're seconding Counselor Angeloni, roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Duddy?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fuji?
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth?
Yes.
Alright, Mike, go ahead.
Okay, the, it shows a bump in the rent.
It's in the 314 account, which is pulled up from account 2, $4,000.
Okay.
What's other contractual?
If you look at the 319 account, that special development, I believe that in the meeting with town manager, I had reduced the fire prevention prices, I'm not sure if it reflected in entirety.
Yeah, it is, in ours.
And I can drop that to 2,500.
So another 500 from there. It was reduced to 3,000 already. And our, so you're saying another 500? Out of the 319.
I'll make the motion. 4220, 319 account, by 500.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Duddy, seconded by Counselor Angeloni, roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Duddy?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fuji?
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth?
Also, 319 account, there's dues for the fire marshal, deputy fire marshal at $100 each. My sheet shows three, that should read two, so it should be new portrait.
I'll reduce 4220, 319 by 100 dollars.
Moved by Counselor Duddy, seconded by Counselor Wentworth, roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Duddy?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fuji?
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth?
Yes.
Everything's contractual. Fire hydrants? That's contractual. Communications. Fire hydrants.
That's all contractual, the water, the water company went up that much? Where'd Richard go?
He quit.
Went and left.
He's on suicide rocket, most.
He's got enough.
Can we go back to the manager? Oh, he came back.
We thought he had enough.
The water company went up on the fire hydrants? Like, $30,000?
I'm sorry?
The water company went up on the fire hydrants?
Yes.
$30,000? Great increase, yes.
20,000.
It's projected.
They don't like this anymore.
171 to 202.
That's the actual, 183.
Oh, okay.
Excuse me, this is why you're on, if you're looking at fire hydrants, just wanna make sure that people are being replaced in the service as you speak, and I wanna make sure that they're included in the budget.
How would we know that? I'll replace hy, I'll replace hydrid markers.
Yeah, there, it is in there for, it's two potential. Well, actually, yeah.
Just a question. How come, how come we pay for condominium hydrants? Aren't they a separate association?
Thanks, Anthony.
It's a credit.
It's a credit.
Okay. Got it.
Chief, your 405 account, is that like turnout equipment and stuff like that?
Oh, includes the potential for five new hydrants to subdue.
405 includes turnout gear and other large prices.
We did a bunch of turnout gear, right, last year?
The golden rental. This is actuals, 52. Yeah, that's what I asked before.
I know, there's nothing, nothing we can do in there.
I was, uh.
Let's go there.
Looking ahead.
Unless you wanna do public works.
Capital.
Alright, we'll do capital. Jump to capital?
Yeah, but we have to provide the, the new budget. We're gonna skip to capital right now. So, how much did we end up?
We didn't get there.
We didn't get to the 90, so not.
23.
602550 is the bottom line.
But how much did we?
23, right?
23.
It'll work.
It'll work.
I don't.
Why don't we put it in the reserve and explain it again?
Well, it's, it's three change for the rescue truck. Three fifty, say four, so the game plan was to do a four-year lease purchase at a hundred thousand a year.
Right.
That's item one.
I thought we talked.
Item two is to remount one of the ambulances, which Phil said is like a hundred and seventy-five. So, do fifty grand every three years, and that, four years, that. So, you can't do a hundred for both projects, it's got to be a hundred for the fireside and fifty to seventy-five for the ambulance side, we do a three-year lease purchase.
So, there's no way.
So, a hundred doesn't.
Why can't we do a four?
There's no way, no way to make it work, is what you're saying.
Not for a hundred, no.
Why can't we do a four?
If you do a four, still, you're, you're still nowhere near the right, right dollars. If you do a four, say three fifty to, say four hundred thousand, sake of argument, bigger interest or anything else, a hundred thousand a year for four years is, is your rescue truck done. And now, the ambulance is a totally separate animal, you're saying.
Chief, what do you need first? We have a hundred.
Let's make a deal.
The rescue truck will be replaced. The ambulance, quite honestly, comes out of it because it's self-sustaining fund, so it doesn't even.
Hundred for the rescue truck.
Okay.
Now, I feel better, that you feel better.
All right, and then my, my, my last motion is.
We didn't vote on this yet.
All right, okay.
Okay, so.
Yeah, just getting you all worked up here.
We just had to get it straight.
Feel like Monty Hall up here.
Okay. So.
My motion, hundred to the.
Yeah, I think here, a second. To the rescue, right?
Yep. Okay, so, Mike.
Mike.
And done.
You got that? Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Duty?
Yes.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fuji?
Yes.
Councilor Wannen?
Yes.
Councilor Fuji?
Yes.
Councilor Wannen?
Yes.
Yes. Phil, on the technical supplies, you put in twenty thousand dollars and the manager raised seventy-five, can we take that seventy-five out?
What is that? We don't even have to cut it. We're not funded.
I know, but it's in the budget.
Yeah, it's, any, any real dollars in here that we.
Richard, the column that says budget funds?
Well, those that.
No, no, just under this one, the three hundred and twelve thousand.
Is budget funds.
Is budget funds, so we would have to make a motion to cut that, or if it's funded by some other source.
Correct.
Or cut it totally.
Correct. So, you're taking two out of the three items out of there already, doing that remains there, is the police interior painting, is that correct?
So, so, can I make a motion to cut the three hundred and twelve thousand out of budget funds?
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm unclear on public works equipment reserve.
It's come, it's going under other funding, the money that was left in these capital projects.